Can I have an acceptance of the agenda?
So moves.
Thank you.
Thank you by Ms. Cantfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. Great. So we're going to start off the meeting tonight with a presentation. MS4, which is Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. Took me a while to figure that out. And who's presenting?
Sarah.
Sarah. Great. How are you?
Thank you. Thank you everybody for having me. Thank you, select work. So I'm Sarah Grady. I'm the Watershed Ecologist for the North and South Rivers Watershed Association. And I'm also the South Shore Regional Coordinator for the Massachusetts Bay's National Estuary Partnership, which is one of 28 EPA-funded national estuary programs. And they're scattered all around the country. The funding comes out of the Clean Water Act, but it's a non-regulatory part of the Clean Water Act. So our mission is to bring science and partnerships to get pretty much things done on the coast. So I'm the South Shore Regional Coordinator. My region, standing right front of the station over here.
Yeah, have a seat.
I'll sit. That's better. I'm very tall.
Just sit by the microphone or pull the microphone over.
Oh, sure. Sure. All right. Could do that. So I, my region is the pink region, the South Shore. I have nine communities that I'm responsible for. And I have four other colleagues who deal in other parts of the coastline from New Hampshire to Cape Cod. And we also have some central staff in Boston. Altogether, we serve 50 communities and about 800 miles of the Massachusetts coastline. More locally, you can kind of see that that yellow outline is the watershed for the North and South Rivers. You can see it goes further inland than my Mass Bay's communities. And it also includes towns like Weymouth and Hingham, which are not in the Mass Bay's South Shore region. So I'm here to talk to you tonight about MS4, which stands for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. And particularly, the permit that all of the towns are responsible for dealing with. So again, it's municipal, so it's public funding. Separate means it's not mixed with sanitary waste. So the word sewer is often, you often think about, you know, wastewater. In this case, it is storm water. So it's runoff from the streets and from the sidewalks and from other what are called impervious surfaces that go down into a storm drain and go out into our local water bodies and can carry with them pollution. So it's a federal-state partnership. And towns are required to do a bunch of different things to try to improve water quality through different stormwater practices. So it includes education of the residents and businesses and developers. It includes doing monitoring of your stormwater outfalls, controlling runoff and discharge at construction sites, and trying to make sure that things like your catch basins are clean and your, you know, DPW trucks and things like that are stored away from water and storm drains. So I'm going to go through kind of what is required of the town, and then I can take some questions. So this permit comes out of a program called Niptes, which is the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. And so it's had multiple phases, but the most recent one, the permit was issued in April 2016, and it became effective in July of 2018. So the towns have only recently had to comply with the newer and more detailed strict permit. And it covers 260 towns in Massachusetts. And that reddish area shows the coverage of that permit requirement. So stormwater causes about little more than half of what are called the impairments to Massachusetts waters. So when we're talking about impairments, it's typically things like bacterial pollution or nutrient pollution. And the waters of Massachusetts are monitored by DP, by the Department of Environmental Protection. And that's used to determine whether or not the waters are meeting certain criteria for use. And the uses are typically things like swimming and fishing, what's called, and primary contact recreation, swimming. And then you have to have a higher criteria, obviously, for drinking water. So in the case of Situate, there are, the latest list from DP actually is the 2012 list because it takes time for all of that to be processed. Most of the waters are category five, which means that they require a TMDL, which is a total maximum daily load document. The waters of Situate are generally impaired for bacteria. So that is the problem that stormwater is causing in, for example, the North River, the South River, and the harbor, as well as the Herring River.
Ruth, do you mind shutting off the light on one of them? Thanks.
There you go. All right. So this permit accomplishes a few things. It helps repair leaks and find illegal connections between the sewer and the stormwater system. Obviously, it helps clean, help keep our waters cleaner and provide healthier places for swimming, boating, fishing, and shellfishing, which is very important to the town. And there have actually been really demonstrable increases and improvements in water quality in the town over the past couple of decades. The Watershed Association's been monitoring the rivers since 1994 through our River Watch Program. So every summer, going out every other week and collecting bacterial samples. And as you know, over the past couple decades, there's been more and more acreage of shellfish bed opened in the North and South Rivers, as well as those beds being open for longer. And a lot of that has to do with these gradual stormwater improvements. And to some degree, also some wastewater improvements, things like finding leaky septic systems. So the six things that the town has to do are public education, public involvement, detecting and eliminating those illicit discharges, so where you have those legal connections, controlling runoff and stormwater at construction sites, both during construction and after construction, and then good housekeeping and pollution prevention on the part of the town. And it's based on, again, the water quality of the water that is going to be receiving that stormwater. And in the case of Situate, most of the impairment is, or all of the impairment, I should say, is bacterial. So I'm going to go through those minimum control measures. The first is public education. And in the new permit, there are four audiences that have to be reached. So it's residents, industry, commercial, and construction. And the town has to provide two messages for each audience during the five-year permit term. And Situate partners with the North and South Rivers Watershed Association through our Water Smart Program. So we receive funding from the town to satisfy this requirement, pretty much, for you. So we do this, the, we're doing similar things this year. These are the things that have already been completed for the town. We have a water all-around-you program where we go into the fifth grades and teach them about the water cycle, stormwater. We have our Gardening Green Expo, which is at Kennedy's, and I should know the date of the upcoming one, but it's coming soon. So you can go over to Kennedy's and buy some plants, but also learn a little bit about local ecology. We have a rain barrel sale. We have outreach about pet waste. As you know, that is an issue in multiple locations around town. Doing PR for the media, as well as on social media. And last year, we had something, a public art raffle, which was a fish out-of-water raffle. We had local artists paint these metal fish, and they were on display at the different libraries on the South Shore, and then we raffled those off. So this is just an example of some of the Facebook posts through that Water Smart Program. So there's one about lawn clippings, sort of not throwing, throwing those down the storm drain, you know, controlling the amount of fertilizer that you use on your lawn so it doesn't run into the rivers, and picking up after a dog. And then on the bottom are some photos from our water all-around-you program. So the students go to different stations and learn about different aspects of water conservation, the water cycle, and stormwater. The second part is public involvement. So this is providing an opportunity for the public to participate in the town's stormwater management program. So that could be as simple as providing input into the kinds of outreach that the town does, or could also be providing input into some of the, some of the other work that the town does to manage its stormwater. The third is the illicit discharge detection and elimination. So it's taking a proactive approach to finding those illegal connections. And one of the best ways to do that is looking for outfalls that flow during dry weather. And I know Sean is aiming to do more of that this summer. So that's part of the, part of the process. And then there's also development of a system-wide stormwater system map, and that has been completed. So there's a map of where the outfalls are, where the storm drains are, and how they are interconnected. So and it's kind of this flow where you have the monitoring of the outfalls, and you rank them, and then re-rank them, and try to figure out where those illicit discharges are, screen them again, and then, then you have a fully investigated system, and you've eliminated those. And you have a 10-year timeframe to accomplish that. The fourth and fifth are pretty similar, just in terms of how they fall under the town's stormwater bylaw. So you do have a stormwater bylaw that manages stormwater discharges from construction sites. Situate's is 15,000 square feet, or 25% of the increased impervious surface, or greater than 1,000 feet on a slope greater than 25%. And when I was looking up your bylaw, I noticed that the bylaw says 25%, but the regulation says 15%. So I don't know. I'm pretty sure it's 25%, but I don't know if you know about that discrepancy at all.
No, but we'll look into it.
Okay.
It's being fixed.
Oh, okay. Okay, great.
Have looked into it.
All right. Wonderful. And it should include requirements for projects to implement control of sediment and erosion. You know, when you're disturbing that land, you're exposing it to the flow of rain, and that can go down in the storm drains. And one of the outreach efforts through that Water Smart Program, so back to that point number two, is this Stormwater Pollution Prevention Guide. So this has been provided to the town and goes out with people who are coming to seek construction permits. So now you get this information about how to control stormwater pollution and be a responsible contractor when you come get your permit. The fifth one is post-construction stormwater management. So again, the same disturbance regulation. In this case, you're wanting, looking to maintain, manage and retain stormwater on the site after construction through things like low-impact design and green infrastructure. So just managing that stormwater so it stays on-site and is able to infiltrate into the ground. And then the last one is just good housekeeping. Make sure vehicles are maintained and not leaking all over the place, making sure that your buildings and your impervious surfaces, your driveways and such are in good shape. Street sweeping, catch basin cleaning, and where there are potential pollutants being stored, making sure that there are plans in place to prevent those pollutants, like road salt or other things, from entering the stormwater. So if you have any general stormwater or general ecology questions, for that matter, I can be reached at sarah@nsrwa.org. And if it's specifically about the Water Smart Program, Lori Wolf in our office is in charge of that program. And in the town, Sean manages the permit program, and you work with Horseyly Witten as your consultant assisting you with your permit.
Great. Ruth, can we thank you very much? Sarah, thank you.
Yep.
I'll go down to the board and see if anyone has any questions. Sarah?
Yeah, who does issue the stormwater permits? Is it the Conservation Commission? Who, who in town issues the permits?
The permit is issued through, through Mass DP.
So there's no one in town who issues permits for stormwater?
Oh, which, which, like, building permits?
Yes. Yeah.
I mean, it's your, your, you know, when people come in for like, construction permits from the building department, right?
The building department does it?
No.
Do we know?
Planning.
The planning and Conservation Commission and Minister of the
The bylaw.
Stormwater bylaw. Yeah, that's your question.
So there's not a permit?
Yeah.
There's the bylaw that they have to follow.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
All right, but
Well, we issue permits.
For stormwater?
I was just going to say, yeah.
We have stormwater permits that we
For every construction?
Based on, based on the stormwater regulations and the bylaw, we issue a permit. And Conservation issues a permit that's often has part in the list of ten.
And the reason, the reason I'm asking is because a couple of years ago, we had a CPC project, the Ball Field needed a new parking lot up in Roach Field. And unfortunately, after it was all approved, found out that no one had done the stormwater. And that's gone. But it just led me to ask the question, well, who does a permit, who does, who do you go to to get the permit? Because it was not clear. Wind up costing $60,000 more because nobody realized that they needed a stormwater permit.
Planning.
For clarification.
Planning and conservation.
Planning and conservation. Okay. Thank you.
Just two quick things. I was just curious that why wasn't all, why weren't all municipalities required, in the Commonwealth, required to go?
It has to do with the impervious surface. So like, how much, you know, I mean, you saw the western part of the state doesn't really have as, it's as much stormwater because it's just falling on trees.
And it's, it's interesting. And could I ask our planner just to give us the quick, the cliff notes on the revisions that'll be, it's town meeting this in April, right? On the storm?
No, stormwater regulations are going to be, we're still working on a final draft, and that only requires a public hearing from the planning board.
Okay.
The regulations are trying to go back to the bylaw that was approved a couple of years ago and correct the inconsistencies between the two.
Okay. So it can be done with the planner?
And it's only the criteria of 15,000 square feet of disturbance or an increase in 25% impervious that throws you into this category.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry.
Yeah, just one thing. Could you, you talked about Situate being like a 50% contributor?
Um, no. So 55% of the impairments, so the, the waters that have some form of pollution, it's due to stormwater.
Is that because of our, the North River?
It's not. It's the entire state. 55% of the entire state.
Interesting. All right. Okay. I just was unclear about that.
Yeah. In Situate, the waters that are polluted, they're polluted with bacteria from mostly stormwater. Yeah. And, I mean, just runoff, you know, picking up bacteria from the surface. Yeah.
So that was actually one of my questions. So what is the bacteria runoff? I mean, it's not dirt and, is it waste? Is it, what is the, because you think that the runoff would be dirt and would be maybe some
Yeah, so that, that incre, so runoff of dirt and such affects the clarity of the water. But the, the bacteria is coming from all sorts of things. Dog waste and, you know, I mean, some of it comes from other animals.
So it's waste that's causing the bacteria?
Yeah. Right.
It's surprising for storm runoff.
Yeah. Well, I'm trying to remember, the stat is on our, on our dog thing. Let me find, there's something, I think it's like, there's daily, okay, let's see. So there's, on the South Shore, there are 12,000 pounds of dog waste produced every day.
That's like 14.
Well, so pick it up.
Yes, yes, definitely. Especially in areas close to the river.
My, my last question was, you said that we fall in this category with this acronym that's like daily testing?
Oh, the total maximum daily load. Yeah.
So do we literally have to go test the water every day?
No. No. So what it is, is it's sort of a prescription for how much the pollution should be reduced, pretty much. And there's a sort of a generalized bacterial one that was accepted by DP. So you're, you don't really have to be, you don't have a specific thing that you're trying to reach, I would say. But it's, it's a calculation based on the loading, which is, you know, the volume of the water carrying how much bacteria. So, but that testing gets done by DP.
And lastly, where, where do we rank in terms of our communities? Are we average, worse than average, or?
Um, I don't really know compared to other, like, in terms of how much pollution there is.
Yeah. Or, I mean, you said we're a category five. Is that
It's, there's a lot of, I mean, on this map, you'll see, on the state, I mean, that's a lot of red, right? And the oranges, which are, there's not that many, means it's caused by something that's not a water pollutant. So it's usually things like invasive weeds in a pond or something like that. So, um, yeah. There was something else I was going to say, though. Say what, ask me again what you said before.
I was talking about how we rank.
Oh, ranking. Right, right, of course. Well, Situate has
So is red the worst?
So Situate has the advantage of being, of having these, this large productive tidal estuary, three of them in town. I mean, four if you, actually, four, because you count sort of the Cohasset Harbor system and the Gulf River and Bound Brook and all that. And that really increases the flushing of the system. So as compared to all of the other communities on the South Shore, the ones that are further up in the watershed have more trouble controlling bacteria because there's just not as much water moving through those streams. So they're a little bit more vulnerable to bacterial pollution.
Okay. So are we going through this mostly just to stay in compliance with the, the steps that we need to follow?
Yeah. Yep. And the town is, is on track, doing great. This is just kind of to, to fill you in on, on what you actually have to do.
Any questions from the audience or anything else to add from planning or ConCom? No?
What about State Roads?
Just your name and address.
Oh, Dan, Dan Engineering Division.
Yeah.
What about the State Roads? I know the town's already done a lot of MS4 treatment systems around the reservoir.
Right.
The state seems to be lagging behind. Are they responsible for that? Are they helping the same timeframe?
Mass DOT has their own Niptes permit that governs all their roads and their work. So that is regulated separately.
Right. So what we heard at a couple meetings ago was Route 3 is leaking into our reservoir a little bit.
Hmm. 3A.
3A, I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you. And I don't, and that's a state road.
Yes.
And I don't know who's kind of monitoring, you know, any concerns about that.
Yeah. I know, I don't want to get into the whole discussion of the reservoir right now, but I know that there has been communication with Mass DOT as part of the reservoir improvement project.
Okay. Great. All right. Well, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thanks for the presentation. It's very informative.
Yep. And also, if you ever have any other, you know, Situate coastal ecology questions and you need me to come brief you on anything, I'm happy. Other things, I mean, I came and talked about salt marshes once, so.
Yeah. Great.
Now you know about ocean acidification? Acid, I can't even say it.
Oh, ocean acidification. Yeah, I'm on, I'm on the State Commission for Ocean Acidification. So I can definitely come and explain that to you as well.
Sounds bad.
I can't, first you have to teach me to say it.
Thank you.
You can leave that corner. I'll try another person.
Sure. Thank you. Thanks again for having me.
I didn't know what you were going on.
Sarah knew what I was talking about.
I did.
No, we're really lucky to have
Oh, thanks.
So the next thing on our, on our agenda tonight are the walk-ins. Are there any walk-ins in here this evening? It's seven o'clock. No walk-ins, okay? The report of the town administrator.
So very briefly, we've got a couple of things. The field update. Work continues on the high school athletic fields. The exterior doors and windows on the concessions building are in, so the outfitting of the interior of that building has begun. I believe the shingling is all done. I didn't get by there today. We are using dip shingles to increase the life and longevity of those. Once that's all done, the project's done, we'll paint the ticket booth and the pavilion next to it to make sure they all match. The granite curb along the parking lot was installed last week. The granite cobblestones of the plaza entrance have been installed. The anchor curbing at the baseball field is done, so if you get out there and kind of get up high and look, you can actually see the outline of that field. The next big project there will be bringing in the base for that baseball field. We have a meeting tomorrow. It'll be the first meeting in two or three weeks, so I'll get an update as anything else to you after that meeting. COA, as you probably are aware, the demolition has commenced on the Seawing. That should be finished by the end of next week, beginning of the week after, weather dependent. They are looking to schedule a groundbreaking for the new building. Right now, it looks like maybe March 18th. Later on in the afternoon, around 4:00, 4:30, I'll let you know as soon as I get that confirmation. We post weekly updates on that construction, and we will continue to post those on our website as they come in. As announced in our last meeting, tomorrow's the Veterans Council meet and greet breakfast at the COA. It's at 9:00. All those who serve their spouses and their caretakers are invited to come, meet the Veterans Council, get information on veterans benefit, veteran services that they may yet be eligible for. You might have noticed early voting has started. Early voting is at the town hall, regular business hours. They have been very busy the last couple of days. That bodes well for the turnout for the primary, but it is going on right now.
Do you know the dates of that, Jim? Is it just this week or is it?
Yeah.
So if you're watching, just this week, early voting.
So and finally, what I think the board's waiting for, we did have a regional sewer meeting today. I think it went very well. It looks like we have a path forward. The Cohasset Sewer Commission is going to be voting either at their next meeting, next Tuesday, or the meeting after that, whether it's move forward or a call option 5.1. So when we're talking, just so the board knows, this is S3, this is S2, and this is S1. Situate 1, 2, and 3. 5.1 is the smaller project, which is North Situate and South Main Street in Cohasset. The amount of storage that Cohasset can wheel to hull right now, without really having to make any major capital improvements, is around 110,000 to 115,000 gallons per day. The amount of storage for the projected build-out of North Situate, if we build it out to current zoning, plus we've had a reserve for the affordable housing up on 3A, we just put that in, it's in there in case we need it, actually equals about 110,000 to 115,000 gallons per day. So the plan would be, we would send our storage to Cohasset. Cohasset would then wheel that equal amount of storage to hull for treatment. What we've talked about as part of this is when we did the infrastructure for this, we would try to size it. we would try to size it, we sent a consultant back to size the infrastructure for this to include possibly taking areas 1 and 2, so if we're putting in a pipe down South Main Street, put in a pipe that's big enough, so we don't have to put in another pipe later. The infrastructure to send more storage to Hull gets very extensive when we start adding in areas 1 and 2, uh, so right now, the focus will be on area 3, with the infrastructure in place to take those at a later time. Once Cohasset votes to move forward, the consultant will finalize the report, and then we will start Phase 2, which is the permitting phase, with the environmental permits and the environmental reports. Discussions will begin on an intermunicipal agreement between the three communities, how we're gonna handle this, what the costs are gonna be, the projected cost, very soft cost for version 5.1 for the town of Situate is $9.5 to $10 million. Because again, there's very little additional infrastructure needed to send that storage to Cohasset, not to Situate, sorry. The cost of disposal will be part of the IMA, and that's what Hull's working on now, because they are upgrading their plant, the whole genesis for this, for those who don't remember, is Hull is renovating their storage treatment plant, they have capacity available in their plant, if we do not do this project, they will not build out to that capacity, they will give up some of that capacity, it will be lost forever, so we are trying to take advantage of the fact that they have capacity and a deep ocean discharge permit to take the storage and send it up there. Uh, we believe that, once we have this finalized, it is eligible for significant state funding, not just the SRF, uh, but Mass Works grants, it checks off, it's a regional project, it is economic development in North Situate, it is transit oriented in North Situate, uh, it is environmental for the river and Cohasset, South Main Street, that's all environmental issues, uh, and potentially it's housing production, so we think we'd be eligible for Mass Works grants and other grants, as well as the SRF, I think the SRF is a, is a no-brainer, the state revolving fund, but that's a loan that we have to pay back, we'll be seeking actual, you know, cash American that we don't have to pay back. Bottom line, if everything goes well and we move forward in a timely manner, this would be out to bid, uh, early in 2020.
Great.
Sorry, 2022.
I was gonna say, what?
Sorry, 2022, it is 2020, early in 2022, so, we talked about it, last time we talked about a three to five year window, we're still in that three to five year window.
Questions, Karen?
Um, Jim, the, the estimate of nine to 10 million dollars, that, is there, I don't know how to phrase this, so the improvements, assuming Hull does the full improvements to accommodate additional capacity, is that the cost borne in that number, or is that an additional, and how does that, if so, how funded?
That will be in what we pay Hull for the disposal of the waste.
Okay, so they'll factor that into their rates, okay.
This is just the actual capital construction cost to build 5.1, which is.
Whatever we would need there, okay.
Sean?
And will the cost be just, and I'm obviously not gonna hold you to it, if you were to include those other areas, 50 million?
Uh, let me get it for you, Sean, I don't wanna go through the story, but it's in the 60 million plus range.
All right, and the infrastructure we can, that's your, oh.
Well, the infrastructure here.
They would have to do more infrastructure.
You would have to do more pipe replacement in here, you would have to do more pumping stations here, there's significantly more infrastructure, right now, and Cohasset's already tested this, they can send about 110,000 to 115,000 gallons a day to Hull, just by changing valves and pumps, more than that would require bigger pumps in different areas, bigger pipes in different areas, new pumping stations, so, there's a lot more work if you want to send more than that to Hull.
Karen?
Yeah, just, so simply, this is a regional project, but it doesn't need a regional, a group to be the legal entity?
We're still looking at that, I think it could probably be done through an IMA, I don't think you need to have a regional SOW entity that does this.
Right.
Uh, but those are some of the discussions that we're having, I mean, the easy thing is, if I'm sending 110,000 gallons to Cohasset, and they're sending 110,000 gallons to Hull, Hull bills me for 110,000 gallons.
Right.
Uh, but, it's gonna be a little more complicated than that, but right now, I don't think we need to have a regional SOW district, the question could be whether we want to set up a separate storage district up here.
Within our town.
Within our town, yeah.
Right, well, because when you bring up all these extra pumping stations, especially in Cohasset, I just want to make sure that we're not somehow bearing.
The full cost of it, yeah, no, that has been worked out, yeah, this, again, this is, this here is a pretty, I'm probably oversimplifying, but it's really not a heavy lift in terms of an IMA because of the way it's gonna work, but further on, if we start doing the larger project, there'll be more, more heavy lifting, it's gonna have to be done, I don't know, so, yeah.
Right, thank you.
How much of the capacity is for that project you mentioned on 3A?
30,000.
A third of the, a third of the?
A little less, but yeah, yeah.
So we'd have to clearly discuss that.
Yeah, that doesn't include, there's no cost included for that connection, because we wouldn't pay for that.
Right, but there's houses that wouldn't get it because they're getting it?
That's right. Um, no, we would do all of Zone 3, all of Zone 3.
My answer is, I agree with that.
That's, we, we just don't have that, that's 80, 90,000 gallons, well, half the capacity.
Well, you can take, you go street by street.
Right, you just, you don't have anywhere near the capacity.
No, like Tony just said, take a portion of that.
Yeah, no, that, I mean, that's up to the board, we just factored it in, because they are looking for disposal, so it's factored in, it's about, again, this total is about 115, 116,000 gallons.
Right.
At buildup, that's at buildup.
Great, well, good job, this is what we, it's on track, it's what we were hoping for, I don't, you know, we know that the business district is included in it, and we'll figure out what the rest of it is, but, um, this is a great solution for.
So, I talked to Will, Will is gonna put together, um, design costs for that, what is the cost due to design, and then sit down with Nancy, see what we have available currently to do design of sewers, and whether we need to put additional money in that for them.
And there would be a betterment to the people that are going to.
And when the saw goes by the house, it'd be a betterment, we haven't even got to the point of writing those numbers yet.
Yeah, so at some point, we want to know how many houses it impacts, divided by.
One more?
Yeah.
So what happens to that 40B if they don't get sewer?
Uh, then they would have to do onsite disposal, which, uh, according to them and their consultant, and all the consultant, he's pretty good, uh, would mean that that entire lot that they're gonna put the structure on would be clear cut, and there would be a groundwater, um, disposal site onsite there, but the entire lot that they have would be completely clear cut in order to fit that.
Is there going to be a public hearing about this, that proposal?
I don't think that filed is, at this point, I don't think it's been filed yet.
No.
So, once it gets filed, it goes to the, either zoning board, or the planning board, I'm not sure who does 40Bs here, 'cause I haven't seen one yet.
Well, it just strikes me as though, this is a big question for the people who abut that property, and they need to understand the implications of, if they, if they have to do an onsite system, what that means versus if they get the sewer, which as we all know, everyone in town is gonna be screaming about yet another redevelopment, get sewer before people who have been waiting for years and years and years, so, just.
Well, when that project went in, that was the plan, there was no, there wasn't even talk of sewer.
Right.
So, but, well, we'll have to talk about it.
The reason, one of the reasons we, we just included is because the town swapped land to make that project available, so, the thought was, if the town swapped land, they must be in favor of the project, if we can somehow make it more manageable to the neighbors, that would be the way to do it, but as you said, you can take that 30,000 gallons, and we can portion that any place we want.
The only thing I'd say is, the town was in favor of that project as opposed to the other one they were proposing, so, I don't know. Great.
Let's get the sewer first, I'm gonna word that.
Um, anything else in your report?
No, that's it.
Any other topics for Jim?
No, just one question, Jim, when do, um, do we have an expected time that we'll be getting the update on the turbine survey?
Uh, I know the draft was in, um, I'm hoping, if not the next meeting, the meeting after.
Okay.
Great, anything, Sean?
No.
All right, great, thanks, Jim, good job, it's a lot of work to get to, get to that point, we, a lot of meetings and a lot of negotiating, we'll call it, um, all right, so, we are gonna have to change the order a little bit here, because we're up at the time for the public hearings, and then we'll come to, um, the sister city after that. So it is 7:15, and we're gonna have the public hearings on the alcohol license, so we have a discussion and a vote for the application for an all-alcohol restaurant liquor license, and common vicar license, and indoor entertainment government for Salt Society at 146 Front Street. Kara, how are you?
How are you guys?
Good.
Hi.
Kara, can you turn to that microphone?
Oh, I sure can, yep.
You can pull it over to you too, whatever.
I'll keep it easy here.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good, tell us about your new project.
Um, well, uh, trying to open a restaurant in the existing restaurant space, which we all know as 146 Front Street, which formerly Oro, do a little restaurant, musical, musical restaurants, um, so, that's the plan.
Great, and it's gonna be called the Salt Society?
Yes.
What's the, give us a little bit of theme, or anything you can that, is it a restaurant or bar, or?
I want some surprises.
Okay.
Um, yes, it's gonna be a full-service restaurant.
Full-service, okay.
Uh, lunch and dinner, um, and, yeah.
Same footprint?
Same footprint, um, you know, we're gonna make some aesthetic changes, just, you know, to put our own.
No expansion, yeah.
No, no.
Sure, questions?
What it, when, when are you looking to open the, the doors?
She's not gonna tell me what kind of beer they're gonna sell.
Trying to keep some surprises, uh, I, we're, we're trying to be aggressive to get this open, as, as, I don't know if you guys know, but I have another project going on in Braintree right now, so, trying to get this open before then, so, I'm shooting before the summer.
Oh, we don't want to spoil a surprise, but to have that space filled with a, with a excellent, um, business in town is great.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be good, I think everyone's gonna be happy.
Sean?
I, I'm afraid I kinda asked the question in public, but, so I'm not going to, everyone wants to know, you know.
I'll give you a hint, we're not gonna be Italian, we're not gonna do burgers, and we're not gonna be Chinese food, so.
Those are three things I, you know.
Donuts? Karen?
No, I think we're all happy to have someone filling that space, and, uh, someone with your experience, who's, you appear to be building an empire, um, it's great, I'm happy to.
Thank you.
That you're doing it.
Thank you.
So clearly, you know what we're about up here?
Yes.
Liquor, you know, you've never had an issue with any of your establishments?
Nope.
So we're, we're really happy that you're expanding, clearly that area could use another restaurant, or you, you're smart enough enough to put one there, I think it's great for the, for the whole area, and it's great for the whole town, so, I'm ecstatic as Karen is as well, Karen?
Just, and, it, I know we're gonna get to the entertainment, but you did ask for an amplified, um, and you did a great, thank you, Lorraine, for that spreadsheet of who has what and everything, but that, um, it wasn't amplified in that space before.
Yes, it was, yeah, Matt, yeah, Matt Chase played there every Sunday with, you know, Bo's Tower, or whatever, Fishman Tower.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we know it works there.
It's hard to have music, and amplified, it sounds like you've got this big band going on, but it's, it's more just about a medium to get your voice and, you know, guitar out there, and a, other than just being like, relying on the strict acoustics, so, but we don't intend to have bands, that's not, the space isn't set up for it.
We saw that as well, I mean, our biggest concern is that there are residents in the area.
Yeah.
And we don't want the late hours of amplified music, and we've, you know, all of the places downtown have been really reasonable in terms of, anyone that complains to, you know, deal with it.
Yeah, that's not our intention at all, we just want to have the, the option to do it, because we have a couple things we're, we're looking at, so.
Okay, and I noticed, uh, well, what's the first one on the, is it the, what's the first one we're voting on?
Um, is the alcohol license.
Okay.
It's alcohol, then common vicar, and entertainment.
So we have, Laurie, we have one.
Yes, we do.
Great, I'm just trying to find that page, anyone from the audience have any questions? Right, so can we have a motion for the alcohol license?
Move to approve a new all-alcohol restaurant liquor license to Salt Society Inc., located at 146 Front Street, with operations, hours of operation, Monday through Saturday, 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM, and Sunday, 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM, contingent upon Board of Health and AB/CC approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris, um, further discussion? So I was, I, I thought the 1:00 AM was outside of the norm, but when you gave us that, all the restaurants in the area have the, have the 1:00 o'clock, so that's.
Yeah, Karen's very good about checking too, so.
Yeah, we, we just put that down there, because, um, that's what my other restaurants have, but, we rarely honestly use that 1:00 AM, it's just more of, you know, the buffer to have.
It's the normals.
Yeah.
Karen, any questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous, four to zero? And the next?
Would you like a motion?
Please.
Move to approve a common vic, vic license for Salt Society Inc., 146 Front Street, Situate Mass, pending final Board of Health approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous?
Move to approve an annual indoor entertainment license to Salt Society Inc., located at 146 Front Street, Situate Mass, Monday through Saturday, 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and Sunday from 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
Isn't it 11:00 AM, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's.
I thought it was 10:00 AM to 1:00 AM.
Monday through Saturday was 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM, I thought.
That's what I said, didn't it?
It is, yeah.
You said 10:00 AM.
No, 10:00 AM was Sunday.
Sunday's 10, right, so, Monday through Saturday, 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM, Sunday from 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM, I stand corrected.
Sorry.
I thought it was 1:00 AM.
For entertainment?
Oh, for entertainment, sorry, okay, okay, got it.
Okay, so the liquor is to 1, and the entertainment's to 11, starting at 11 and starting at 10 for your Sunday brunches, any questions? Do I have a second, did you second any of those? Second by Mr. Harris, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, that's four to zero, great, best of luck.
Thank you, guys.
We look forward to.
I'll be sure to let you know when we open, and come in and check it out, thank you.
Count on it.
Okay.
All right.
One for the table.
Thank you so much.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, um, is Still Waters All-Alcohol Beverage Store License Cease to Conduct Business, Tracy, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. So tell us what's going on with you.
Um, so I, for financial reasons, had to close down Still Waters at the end of January. Um, in three to five years, it would, it would be better.
Come back.
So my, my, I'm working, I've talked to numerous, um, people in terms of transferring the license, and finding a new, or securing a new location, um, I'm working with one person in particular, who we're hoping will move forward this week, so, I'm feeling pretty good about that progress, um, so at this point, I'm just looking for the allotted time to, to go through.
So selling the business and the liquor license with it?
Selling the license, um, we're still working through all of the details on what part of it I would be a part of, or how it's all gonna work out.
Um, questions?
So you're just selling the license itself, the document, the piece of paper?
Yes.
Lorraine, we've had this discussion a million times, I've seen them advertised in Boston, I've never heard of 24 years, has this been done in Situate?
We've had it advertised in Situate.
Doesn't mean it cannot be done, or just hasn't been done?
Uh, it has been done, I actually provided you with a copy of a letter from the legal, uh, legal council.
Yeah.
Um, you know, Rivershead purchased, uh, the Burger Bar, uh, Voyage purchased Sands End, Hook and Harvest purchased PJs, um, Front Street Liquor had theirs up for sale, it was an astronomical amount of money, and nobody purchased it, so she ended up eventually, after eight, eight to 12 months, turning it back to the town.
Right.
Um, and then 7-Eleven and Tesco.
But they've all.
The other one, the Voyage Liquor License, is for sale for their fabric store as well, uh, it's currently for sale, um, so, this would be the second liquor license for sale currently, for a fabric store license.
I actually purchased mine as well.
Yes.
It's always, it's always stayed at the same location, though, I just was under the impression that I could buy this license.
Yours didn't stay at the same location.
It didn't?
No.
All right, I never thought that. I never thought that.
Didn't they buy it at 1:00 and move it?
They bought it and transferred it, yes, this is exactly what I was saying.
No, but did the location, were you always at that spot or did you buy?
I bought it and put it in the same location and then moved it.
Right, so she bought it in the same location, so it's...
My question is, could...
What I'm trying to say is she didn't buy it from a person who had it there.
It was already closed down for six months or 12 months.
She bought it. Front Street Gourmet turned it in and she bought it, so it went to a different location.
Oh, the full liquor license, yes.
The liquor license.
Right, they turned it in.
But it is allowed by law, it is in the documentation that I've provided from...
No, we, we read it all, yeah, I, I, I think, well, go ahead, I'll let you finish on it.
No, I just, so what you're saying is, what I thought was going on, and I don't, I've never seen it done, I could buy this license and open it up in Green Bush?
Correct. It would be, it would be a purchase of a liquor license and change of location, a transfer of a liquor license.
The transfer has to be approved by the board.
That's right.
So...
Which we've done many...
Right, so the sale of her liquor license would be contingent upon the, the transfer being approved by the board of Selaback. If you didn't approve it, the sale goes away.
And the locate, and approval of the location.
You have to approve the whole, you have to approve the whole thing.
Right. Right, I guess the thing that, that I toss around in my head is that you would be making money off of a town, you know, a town liquor license that you didn't really do anything to get because you bought a business that needed it to function. So I, I guess that's, and I haven't figured out whether that's good or bad, it's just if, um, you know, the town doesn't benefit anything from somebody, like in Boston, they'll sell them for $100,000, and all of a sudden, somebody made out just because we approved you getting a liquor license. Um, I guess that's the part that I'm...
But it's allowed under state law, that's what's happening.
I know it's allowed, well, it's allowed, but we don't have to allow it.
I think we do, actually.
Mr. Chair?
Well, we cannot renew a liquor license if the board chooses not to...
Sure, that is true, but we cannot bar the actual transaction otherwise.
Right, but we could not let them serve if, not that I would do that, I'm just saying that's, that's the thought that comes to my head, yeah.
If I may, I think the issue here is, and I know there are different types of liquor licenses, but in this case, it's an all-alcohol package store liquor license. If we have one of those still available in town...
Which we do not.
All right, so then...
So we not have any value at all.
Right.
Correct, but if we, if we don't have any available and someone wants to sell theirs, they, they can sell it for what they can get for it, but we still have to approve it. And it's only a matter of whether or not there's anything available. And if there isn't, because we can only have so many of the different types of licenses, and that's why they go for so much in Boston, because there is a finite number of the various types of licenses, and everyone wants to be in the restaurant business or in the package store business, so they sell them for hundreds of thousands of dollars. So it's just, it's, it's allowed by state law.
Yeah, no one's, no one's, I, I get all of that, and I know it's allowed, I'm just saying, you'd hate to get in a predicament where someone was buying a liquor license, getting it for free from the town because there was one left, not that, you didn't do this, I'm just working this through in my head, you'll get the chance. Um, and, uh, and then selling it because we didn't have inventory, you know, and, uh, clearly capitalism, you're allowed to do it, there's no, um, you know, there's nothing against it, I'm just...
Jim's throwing stuff at you.
That's the thought that comes to my head that I'm tossing with Ray.
Yeah, I think there's a bunch of different circumstances. I mean, in mine, I actually purchased it from someone, um, so at this point, I am, it's, I'm not, it's not in an effort to make any profit, it's in an effort to pay...
Yeah, or you, you being the person, the person before you being able to do that.
But also, people, you could, you could, you could argue that there's a goodwill associated with it if you're selling it with a customer base or a customer list or something, something like that, so I guess it depends on everybody's circumstance.
Not if you're just selling the license, that's where I can see if you're, if you're buying the restaurant at a place that has customers and there are people who used to go in there, but if you're just selling the piece of paper, as Sean said, and I'm not, it's completely legal, it's, it's just my thought.
One point to Karen's, um, comment, you can petition the A B C C for another license if we didn't have, I'm not, I don't know about this type of license, but I remember in the harbor, someone petitioned the A B C C for an additional pouring license.
Takes a act of legislature.
They got it.
You have to go to the legislature and ask for additional licenses.
Yeah, well, anyways, this, this isn't the case, you're just turning it back in and you are asking for the 60 days, is that it, to...
So she's not turning it back in?
Or she's ceasing operations?
Yes.
And at that, the law says you have six, six months, not 60 days, at, at which point it would then come back to us, right?
At which point you would re-continue the public hearing unless she's transferred into the interim, and then request that the license be returned in six months.
Right, so the clock has started on the six months for you to figure out what you're going to do.
I've got it tonight.
Any question? Did you have a question, sir?
I just had to comment because, I'm Mark Davis from Hummerock.
Thanks.
Um, you keep saying that she didn't pay, she didn't do anything for the license, but when you buy a business, you buy everything it encompasses, right? Whether it's a sink or refrigerator or whatever, so if you come on hot times, you can sell those off as pieces if you wish, just trying to recoup your losses, someone lost and she's trying to recoup it, and, and you keep saying she did nothing for that license, and I'm wrapping my head around that, trying to say, as a member of the town who pays taxes with the town, if I buy something, I buy everything in it, and it's my will to do whatever within the law, to do whatever I want with it, and you keep saying that, it's plugging the crap out of it. You know what I'm saying? Like, you keep, you keep telling her she did nothing for it.
First of all, the conversation's gone on for about three and a half minutes, so I, I hope we're not having a scar...
No, you said it four times, so I'm just trying to understand.
As I said, I'm just kind of working it through in my head right now, what I think of somebody getting a license for free, and not her, because she bought a, she bought a business.
Okay, so that's, that's what I was...
And then they're saying, okay, now I've got this asset, that's an asset of the town, I'm going to sell it for a profit, and that's, that's just what I'm, you know, mixing around out here to figure...
Okay, when you first said it, it sounded to me like you were almost blaming her.
No, 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 she bought a business, she bought a, a sink and she bought a...
We're good, that's where you went it up, when you first started, you said something different, as a representative of me, I had an issue with that, but if you're, if you've already, now that you've clarified it, I'm fine with it.
Okay.
That's all?
Yeah. Any other, yes, ma'am?
Yeah, hi, I'm Carrie Curry, and I own, um, Board 143, and I was initially sharing space with, um, Stillwater, um, and then she told me, probably about a month after we began business, that she was going to close the doors. Later, um, she did, so we went ahead and secured, um, and laymen to the, to buy the beer and wine license from the Voyage in Marshville and Hummerock, um, and then ultimately we found out that we are sort of stuck at this point, because we can't buy the license from the Voyage until Tracy sells the license for Stillwater.
Because you can only have one license on...
Only one license at, uh, any location.
But technically, her license is still...
She's actually, well, she, yeah, I mean, she's a defunct business, and technically, the, um, laws of the selectmen of the town says that when a, any licensee who permanently ceases its business operation shall immediately surrender its license and physically deliver the license to the board, not asking Tracy to turn it, and now that's not what the business is about. I just feel like six months is truly an undue hardship for my business. Um, I'm not going to be in the same business for six months without the beer and wine business. I have the license ready to go, I have the location ready to go, I'm paying rent on the location where my business is in North Situate, where Stillwater was, um, I just think it's important to note that six months is going to pressure me. Um, and I, go ahead.
No, go ahead, you finish.
Um, I would ask the board, since technically she should be turning the license in right away, and I know she has an active conversation going on with, um, a possible buyer, that maybe we could circle this back a little bit sooner rather than later to find out where this is going, because I'm, I'm limbo right now. I have, but not that I have a sign on my door, but I, a little tea shop isn't just going to work with this huge space that I've secured, not knowing that I couldn't, um, buy the license from the Voyage until Stillwater still does.
So, Lorraine, maybe you know, or maybe we have to ask town council, even though she's not using the license, is the location still licensed to sell?
Yes, I would call the A B C C to ask, and they said they cannot license that location until it's transferred.
No, no, but she...
We do have a parallel.
Let me finish, so, but there is a liquor license at that location right now...
Correct.
...that has not been ceased, has not been turned in, it's just...
In limbo.
What's a limbo, whatever the status is, so why here she keeps selling alcohol under the license that has not been turned in yet?
Well, I suppose we could investigate a workaround such as a change of manager or something like that for six months. Um, I haven't explored that, because I don't know if these two business owners are interested in doing that.
Yeah, well, I think, uh, well, we should find that out, because what does a license in limbo mean? Does it mean that it's not being used? Or, I mean, like, is that location still licensed to sell liquor?
Yes.
Even though that company, so why can't she keep selling liquor?
If she...
She doesn't have the license.
Yeah, it's Tracy's license.
But how were you, you were...
So we were two separate businesses, sharing space.
Under one license, but under...
I wasn't selling beer and wine.
She wasn't on the li, she's not on the license.
Right, it was two separate businesses.
Yes, two separate businesses.
And my goal isn't to, to take six months, right? I mean, uh, there's obviously a lot of parties involved, so, um, when, I mean, and Lorraine has been involved in this, so our goal is to try and wrap this all up as soon as, as soon as we can.
Go ahead, Sean.
Aren't there rules and laws, well, from the state, that say if you're not selling, you must notify us?
That's why she's here.
I'm sorry?
That's why she's here.
No, long before, long before this. I can remember businesses going on vacation for a week, Cosmos Cafe, they'd go back to Greece or something, they'd come in and tell us they're going to be shut down, because we're the license holders, for a week.
I, I provided you the backup for, from town council.
That's all.
Uh, there's no requirement to inform the board in a specific amount of time.
What she just read, I, you know, I...
Well, that's the document that, that Jim put together for liquor license in Situate. That's the board of public policy.
The statute requires if you are seeking, if you are stopping to run your business, that you are to notify the licensing authority and you have a time certain to turn in your license. However, the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission, if you try to take her license because she's not using it, will overturn you, because they'd say you have to give them at least six months to try to dispose of that license. So the board technically, under the statute, could hold a hearing to revoke the license because she's not using it. She would go to the A B C C, they would overturn that in about 30 seconds, give her the license back, and give her the time to, to dispose of it.
If I could, if I may, we got touched with the A B C C legal department, and they said we was up to the town, whether or not, under their jurisdiction, whether or not anyone would revoke her license. I'm not looking for anything to revoke Tracy's license, that's all I'm here for. Um, but I do think it's important to note that you do have the authority to do so.
So, let me ask a question, only because clearly I'm not communicating well, sorry. Um, the, your problem is that there's not going to be a business in the other half of your store, not that you can't sell alcohol.
My big problem is that I can't sell alcohol, I don't have the license.
Which, and that's the problem, that you can't sell alcohol. If you could sell alcohol, if there was a license...
Sure, sure, right, let's go.
What, excuse me, why, why don't you buy the license from her?
It's too expensive, what she's looking for is outside of what I'm able to afford. She has all, I have all alcohol, the license she's looking to buy is beer and wine.
She's looking for a beer and wine license.
And I have.
But it's in Hummerock, is, and you sold that? Beer and wine license?
No, no, no.
What does this got to do with...
The beer and wine license belongs to the Voyage in Hummerock. The Hummerock had a beer and wine license and a pouring license, package and pouring.
Okay.
They have given up the package license.
Okay.
Okay, so they are looking to sell their package license to this woman, the problem is, the license that she wants to establish would have the same address, physical address as the license that is currently held there. You cannot have two licenses at the same location.
Sounds like lawyers are necessary.
She needs to show her license before she can get a license.
I mean, if they want to work something out, they're trying them, you know, they're certainly able to do that.
And we're trying to move the process along so that, you know, we're not holding things up for a long time.
Can I ask a question?
One second, ma'am. Did you have a thought?
I, I, half a thought, is that...
Word it properly.
I will try very hard to. So, Lorraine, you were speculating on a possible workaround, I mean, to, for you guys to craft an agreement that would be an interim agreement while you're trying to sell yours, is a heavy lift. And, so, do you think, I mean, it, it, it does, it's counterintuitive that while she's notified the board under A B C C rules, or whatever the letters are, rules that she's not operating and not licensing, but she's in limbo, it's just counterintuitive that we wouldn't be able to reassign that location while it was not in, it just doesn't make sense to me.
Well, she, there is still a license premise there, whether she's using it or not, she still has a license for that premise.
Right, but if she's notified us as the, you know, in...
That she is not operating anymore, right, but there's nothing to say she couldn't turn around and start operating again.
Then it'd be two licenses.
Yeah, she doesn't have a license, she doesn't have a lease there anymore.
Well, that doesn't matter.
Okay.
So...
She has a license for that location, period. If you want to move to have a hearing to revoke her license, as she said, A B C C says you can do that. I'm just telling you from a practical standpoint, A B C C will give her the license back, because you have not given her sufficient time to dispose of the license.
A practical question. Can she reassign the location? What's the process if we wanted to say, okay, we're gonna, she's gonna hold on to her license, but we're gonna give it, it's gonna be at X location? What are the rules for that?
Yeah, you'd have to have a hearing to move the license.
That's what's going to happen.
Change the location.
No, I mean, in the interim.
She's away from place in the interim.
It could be her house.
Well, that depends.
No, I know. That's what I'm asking the rules. Obviously, you're not gonna have it in your garage. That's a bad idea.
I mean...
I feel like your inability to come to an agreement is not your...
But, Lorraine, we want to try and work something out here.
I mean, Anne Berline's saying maybe we can give Anna a license for a couple weeks.
Whole street's trying to have a license.
So I'm gonna have to stop for one second.
Somehow I think, gentlemen and ladies, this is becoming more difficult than it really needs to be. We really do. Thank you.
What's your name and address, ma'am?
Anne Berline, Annie Chris Road.
Thank you. I'm gonna have this man go first because he said he had a solution and you have confidence in him.
Hello, I'm in the four.
What's your name and address?
54 Callahan, 14 March, in Hummerock. When I bought Sands then, there was two licenses that came with it, right? One for off license, one for consumption. So, and the ABCC states, I think it's like 15 dash 80, section 15, is that if you have a partition going down your establishment with doors that you can hold two licenses. It is very rare in the state of Massachusetts to have it, where you actually can have two different types of licenses, which is more with a partition, straight down the... So if their space was going to Sweet A and Sweet B with a partition, you can hold two licenses.
I spoke to the attorney about that. Mr. Lewis about that.
And how did that not work? Is that...
I spoke to him regarding the petition.
Yes.
That's how Keith is able to have two licenses.
We, we, we did have that option, yeah. I, I think it may be possible if the landlord and property owner agreed to split the property into two addresses, maybe Sweet A, Sweet B. There is an office in the property that is divided with a door, so that may be a viable option. I don't know.
Lorraine, have you run this situation by the ABCC?
Yes, I did.
Do they have a solution, an answer?
No, they said she has six months to sell her license. And I asked, can we do it right away in parallel so that we can get it done as soon as possible? And they said yes, which I have done before. I've done things in parallel. I did it with Foro and Open Harvest.
So it seems like...
Foro can move it as soon as possible. I talked about the other solutions such as co-locating and putting a dividing wall as Keith imagined.
Okay.
But what, wait a minute, but what Keith does, he pours in packages. These are two packages side by side. One might be beer and wine, but the other one's all alcohol. That's, so I just...
I don't think it's gonna work, but...
Yeah, no, it doesn't, it may be...
Good idea.
It's right.
I mean, we're prior right now, right?
Okay.
So it could happen in a month.
Okay. So, I don't know what we can do to help you. I think there's a couple solutions. You know, you two could work it out and say, let her be the manager for six months so she can establish, so she can use your license for six months, which doesn't seem like that's gonna work out just from facial expressions. Or the, or maybe this partition thing would work, but I don't know if there's anything else we can do to help you because, as Jim mentioned, if we revoke the license, it's not gonna stand.
And I'm not...
Yeah, no, I'm saying that's, that seems to be the three things that we...
I'm just, I'm sort of more wondering, where is the six months sort of timeline that I keep hearing about? I, I, I could, I mean, I was getting attorney with...
Apparently it starts tonight.
I can't find it anywhere.
I can give you a couple of case law examples and a letter from our town council if you'd like.
Right, I'm happy to do that with you.
Okay, that'd be great.
Yeah, yeah, you do.
So the board has come to allow those...
Well, the only thing before the board right now is they're being informed that she's no longer operating her licensed establishment. The board has the authority at some point, if they wish, to convene a hearing to revoke that license because it is not being used. However, it won't stand, but they still have that authority as the local licensing authority. They can do that. So the other thing the board could do is just ask that she keep us informed of where she is along the way. We can tell you that. She's got a purchase and sale, the paperwork's in. For the transfer, you get your paperwork in for your transfer. We'll do them on the same night.
Yeah, it's very good.
Okay, so...
Right, well, the problem for her is it could take two months to do this and she's got two months.
I'm gonna get this one, cut out this one.
So we have to get creative somehow.
We can check with ABCC that there's a separate office in there and see what they say.
I asked Callahan, call again.
How long have you been closed?
I'm closed the January 31st.
January 31st, you stopped?
What'd they say?
January 25th. She stopped selling beer and wine. And were you on the lease? Did you have to...
Ma'am, sorry.
I'm a big...
Yeah, no, we're all trying to, we're, okay, we're all trying to solve your problem, but I don't, I don't see any, I don't see an easy solution. So what I'd like, I mean, ideally, you two would get together and work something out so that no one gets hurt in it and...
One different space, open a different space.
Well, I think that's part of what I was trying to buy her license. Can't really find a space.
Right.
Well, that's...
That's not my problem.
Can, would it be, I would think it's appropriate that if we do, you know, start the clock, it should start on January 25th, not today.
It starts the night of the hearing.
It starts the night of the hearing because we have to have a hearing.
As soon as possible.
We can change it from six to five.
I don't think we can.
Well, we're not talking about the time. We're just accepting that's in our motion.
You can, you can have her back in, but it's, it's an act of futility.
Yeah, doesn't matter.
I think we, Lorraine and I will talk to ABCC tomorrow about the second room there and see if, if they're willing to be nice and help out.
So you have a lease yourself on the same, part of the same property?
Yeah, I have the lease of the, oh, the whole space. I had to take over the whole space.
Okay. I wish we could help you. We're more than willing to try and help. I just don't know what we can do. Okay. So can I have a motion to at least start the clock running on this?
Move to leave, to leave Stillwater's Wine and Gourmet public hearing open and follow-up in six months. The license will be canceled and returned to the town of Situate unless Stillwater's Wine and Gourmet is resumed or an application for a transfer is filed within six months.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye? All's against?
Me.
Against what?
The motion.
Okay, so the vote is three to one in favor. Thank you. If we can help, let us know. We'll, you know, we'll, we'll do what we can because we don't like to see a business in, in North Situate hurting. We're sorry that your establishment didn't work as well. You know, we'd love for you two to get together and try and work something out, even for a six-month period of time, but that's up to you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Everyone ordered cheese.
Okay, the next, do I have to do, this is, this one isn't a public hearing, right?
Which one?
The next one for the Voyage?
No, we go back to...
Sister City?
That's what I'm asking.
No, just those two with public hearings.
Right, so we'll go back to the 710 Sister City? Brenda and Sean, or just Brenda?
It's just Brenda.
Siobhan and John both asked me to, for their apologies for not being here. Siobhan is on a family vacation unexpectedly, and John is, as we speak, meeting the ambassador of Ireland to the United States. So you got the booby prize.
Hardly.
So anyway, I just have five very quick things, and I will be quick. The first thing is the student exchange. It is going beautifully. I believe the application deadline has passed. I'm not absolutely sure, but I believe it has. And there was a great turnout for the informational meeting, great enthusiasm. The students from Skibberine are coming here in the fall, and our students will be in Skibberine St. Patrick's Day next year. And our friends, Rita and Helen, run the parade, so I just know who are going to be the guests of honor at that parade and the star of the show. It will be fabulous. Fabulous enthusiasm for it. They had over 20 come to the informational meeting, so that's a great success. The second, and I'm going to give you all copies of this, is our calendar for March. We operate around the whole year, but in March, we're our busiest because that's St. Patrick's Day. And starting this week, we have the second Irish film of the Foreign Film Festival. This we do jointly with the French Sister City. It was theirs idea originally, and they invited us to join them when we were started. And we have these movies, they, we do not charge for entry. We strongly suggest a $10 donation. And with the six movies, we split whatever we make and we get maybe $50 a movie. So this is, for people with no budget, a lot of money. So ours is The God, which is a comedy. It's rated R for language, but it's Brendan Gleeson at 7 o'clock this Thursday night at St. Mary's Hall. And our final Irish movie is on March 12th at 7 o'clock at St. Mary's Hall. That's Dancing at Lunasor. It was a play written by Brian Frill, who is acknowledged as the greatest Irish playwright, contemporary playwright, and the movie stars Meryl Streep. So it's quite a quality production. And the second thing is that we try to support everything Irish happening in town. So we, I just have to mention the Roaring Twenties Party Saturday night at the Barclay that is a fundraiser for the parade, and that's a great time. The, we have, as part of our mission, that we try and do something for every age group in town. So at March 11th, is it? No, I'm sorry. It's Lucky Friday, the 13th, we're having Irish bread at the Senior Center. This is an annual event. We make homemade Irish bread for them, bring tea, and have a wonderful time at the Senior Center. They have to make reservations through the Council of Aging because of the limited space. But that, the first year, we only had about 15. Last year, we filled the place, and I think we'll fill it again. They love it. The, I want to tell you about the grant. We had, we had to apply to the Irish government for grant renewal by February 19th. Now, we haven't had the meeting to plan for next year yet, so, but we have sent out a, save the date to town administrators in the eight towns that will be involved in the Irish, Irish Heritage Trail. And so when we were doing the grant proposal, this year, we got $1,250 to conduct the meeting, to seed money. And we sent out the letter, which you'll get a copy, in the name of the Board of Selectmen, the Economic Development Commission, the Heri, the History, Historical Commission, and the Situate West Cork Committee. So that I think that will really let people know it's a serious venture. So, and when planning it, we've applied for $75,000 for next year, which took our breath away. It's nothing for them. They hold, they give millions of dollars to people. So 70, $1,250 was nothing. 75 is not much more. But we have got estimates from the Metropolitan Area Planning Council because we realized we, we can't plan this. We don't have the expertise, and they do. So they told us they would cost $40,000 plus 20% contingency, and then the rest of the money would be to develop a, a website. The Wild Atlantic Way in Ireland, which is one of the two trails that we're using as example, we're using the Boston Irish Heritage Trail, which is a walking or riding trail and very local, and the Wild Atlantic Way, which stretches from Cork, well, really Conseil, to Donny Gaul. And you have to drive it. You can do little parts where you could take six months to do it if you felt like it. But their website is fabulous. And we would like our, our trail to be driven by a website. The people could get a passport, could find out all about it, et cetera. So we need somebody who will develop that great website. So that, we have it, and then other incidental things. So we will be holding a meeting May 20th with representatives from towns. I would urge you, when you get your invitation, to consider coming to that meeting. We will try and be quick at that to let people get to work and not delay. The, I also want to mention that John Sullivan told me that the Irish Plot Commission Monument, Memorial is, is almost ready, and that is going to be dedicated April 26th. And people have been invited from Ireland as well as the United States, and we're hoping that they can come. And I can announce now, the reception afterwards will be in St. Mary's Hall for that. And we have a press release ready to go next Monday on the trail and what we're doing. And so far, we've been very successful, and we have now summed up our mission statement rather than a paragraph and three words, to celebrate, educate, and anticipate. And that's what we do. We celebrate Irish accomplishments. We educate not only students, but Situate residents, Americans and people in Ireland. People in Ireland don't quite understand what Irish Americans are because until the European Union, there was no I immigration. There was only E immigration, people leaving. Now, people are coming into Ireland, and they don't quite know what to do. And they don't understand how we retain Irishness as well as Americans, but they are learning. So they, they're very interested in learning more about that. So we are anticipating the initial years of the trail to have about 700 visitors monthly. And that's based on the fact that in the eight towns alone, there are 70,000 people claiming Irish heritage. And that is, so 1% of that is 700. So if we get any more, it's wonderful. But I want to thank you for your interest, and I also want to encourage you to attend any of the functions. And our main one coming up is March 11th at the Tinker Sun in Norwell. Brian Hulian does a wonderful corned beef dinner, and he's adding his magnificent shepherd's pie this year for non-corned beef eaters.
Brenda, thank you for coming in. Thank you for the update.
Okay.
And as always, you do great work.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now moving to the 725 discussion, vote for the Voyage St. Patrick Celebration. Keith?
Keeping with the Irish theme? Yeah.
What do you want to do?
So we'd like to request permission to have a tent to get into here for St. Patrick's Day for the weekend, though. I think it's Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
No, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Tuesday.
So we're not going to...
No. Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and then Tuesday is St. Patrick's Day. So we're gonna do it that way this year instead.
Makes sense.
Right, and we saw Irish step, music, all sorts of stuff will be going on.
We have icklies this year as well. We have the armory singing on the Sunday.
Guinness has come in to engrave glasses, Irish step dancing, all the same things that we had.
How was the turnout last year?
Great.
Fantastic. It was like, almost like a place to go for that. Possible. And we'd like to just continue that.
Oh, I think you've definitely proven your track, you know, proven all the concerns we had the first year.
Yeah.
You've managed very well, and it is becoming a tradition, so I think it's great.
Just to make things better and make it smoothly for requests and details there as well.
Yeah, you saw that.
I saw that.
Parking issue in Mojave. She's still having a ghosting, but no complaints or anything. Everybody after this can be proactive there.
We just want to ask if we can use the town parking lot as well, just in case we need the overflow for that weekend. Mark Davis has given us permission...
Last year, you guys donated USO, I matched and donated mine. I'll, I'll do it again if you guys are in. Any leverage I can use on...
I don't think there's many beachgoers.
No, not, not much.
Although this winter.
Yeah, no, who knows, it could be 80 degrees.
The kids parked a lot over in your park lot, like the families and stuff, so they would walk the kids over and stuff like this. It was good that you guys did that because we don't have enough, you know, between just us. We can't, we can't help them. With the kids, we have like two dams in school, so...
Oh, right, I didn't even think of that.
Head buses and, yeah, yeah. And I can put some of those on my backlot, which isn't a parking lot because it's just side stuff, but then, you know, 40, 50 more spots from you guys, it's perfect. Because the place would just fill up with Irish dams on the parents', you know, with two, potentially three schoolers front. It fills up pretty.
Sean, any questions?
He answered my concerns, neighbors, what, how do they feel?
They're all there.
So, yes. We definitely, this is not the offer. We didn't, we're not just, we didn't just fill the business. We like to put in community, you know?
Right, right.
It's all together, yes. I'm their biggest neighbor, right across the street, and then my sisters and stuff, we're fine. We're fine from that side anyways. And then I do get the other neighbors asking me, are you gonna do that again? Are you gonna open that again? And then is the town gonna allow that again? Because they enjoyed it. I sat next to all the neighbors last year, so I, I don't think that's gonna be an issue.
And that's, is it Mark Davis?
Mark Davis.
What's the address, just so we can get it?
Uh, you can use 19 Central, whatever's fine. 192110.
Any questions?
No, sounds like fun.
Yeah, so not, not a complaint in the world last year. I've eaten there a number times since then. It's, it's great and it's packed and...
Would you like a motion?
I would like a motion.
Move to grant outdoor entertain, is that the first one? Yeah. Move to grant outdoor entertainment permits to Rue Grim and Keith O'Callahan. The Voyage located at 14 Marchville Avenue, Hummerock, for St. Patrick's Day celebration with a comedy show, Irish step dancing, and live music on March 13th and 14th, 2020, from 8:00 PM to 11:00 PM. March 16th, 2020, from 3:30 PM to 7:30 PM, and March 17th, 2020, from 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM. Second?
Second, Ms. Conley. Further discussion? I guess, was the parking lot in there?
No, we can make that seven.
Okay. All in favor of the first motion?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, four to zero. Is there another motion?
Malt and wine. Move that the Board of Selectmen approve one-day wine and malt license to the Voyage Restaurant for a St. Patrick's Day celebration in the outdoor tent on their premise on March 13th, 2020, from 6:00 to 12:00. And March seventeenth, from five P.M. to twelve A.M.
Second. Second, my Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excuse me. I can drive through the parking lot if you'd like.
Is that the last motion for this?
Yes.
Okay. We can get some sort of motion to allow them to use parking lots, as long as Mr. Davis goes in.
Done.
Move that the Board of Selectmen allow the use of the public parking lot located in Hummerock. In concert with Mr. Davis's lot is additional overflow parking for the aforementioned date. How's that?
Perfect.
Second.
Second, my Ms. Conley. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
See you in March.
I'm dying here.
Good job, Karen.
Through coffee.
Okay, so now we have an outdoor permit. Michael, is it?
I'm not Michael.
I was going to say. Is it Van Tyne?
Van Tyne, yes.
Right.
I am Patricia, Michael's mother.
Okay. Patricia. So tell us what you want, even though we read it.
So we started out with, my son rented the house at seventy-nine Kenneth Road. Him and his wife got married in San Francisco last summer. Most of his family and friends from the East Coast did not make it that far, so they decided to do a vow renewal and a celebration here this summer. And then next year, we're going to Thailand, where his wife is coming from. So it's been a long process.
We have no jurisdiction.
So he rented the house at seventy-nine Kenneth Road, and his original plan was to hold the ceremony and the reception there. As we worked through it with Lorraine's help, and then I spoke with Allison in your office also, we found that the Situit Harbor Community Building is actually, was actually available that day. So we have moved to kind of a Plan B, where we would have the ceremony at the house, ceremony and a champagne toast and some pitchers, and then we would adjourn to the Situit Harbor building, Community Building, for the actual reception.
Pier forty-four.
Yes, Pier forty-four.
Good. So you're looking for us to give you a?
So they are going to have a guitar player for the ceremony and the cocktail hour at the house.
Great.
Okay.
So it's, we're going to have people park at the Pier forty-four, just to make it shorter, and we're going to have a school bus that will transport people to the house, just so we don't try and overtax the neighborhood. They'll run the shuttle back and forth for a half hour, get everybody up there. We'll do the ceremony, then we'll do the same going back. So four to five for the ceremony, five to six for champagne and some pitchers, and then the reception will be six to ten. And we have been in discussions with the chef's table, which is one of the approved vendors.
So those times didn't?
Yeah.
Time of the motion.
Yeah. When would you be looking to have this celebration at Kenneth Road?
Well, people would start showing up probably around three-thirty, but the ceremony would be four to five. And then.
Entertainment license from four to five at Kenneth Road?
Well, probably four to six to be, to be realistic.
You said four to five thirty.
Okay, yeah, okay.
And you don't need one?
We'll start trying to get people out at like five thirty.
You don't need an entertainment license for the event at?
No, because it's inside.
Okay. Can I have a motion?
Move to grant an outdoor entertainment permit to Michael Van Knight?
Van Tyne.
Van Tyne.
That's okay.
Oh, it's spelled wrong here.
We have a typo in our code.
Anyway, for two folk guitar players on June twentieth, twenty twenty, from four P.M. to six P.M. at seventy-nine Kenneth Road.
Second, my Ms. Canfield. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
Congratulations.
Have a good time.
Again, thanks.
All right. Now we'll move on to Steve Moan, Situit Harbor Town Marina's rehabilitation contract.
Hey, good evening.
So tell us about the project.
Well, we put the project out to bid about three weeks ago, four weeks ago. We got twenty-eight firms took out plans for the project, and we got three bids back on the project. And we, or the consultant suggested one firm to do the project, and it was Sea White Marine in Danvers.
And there's an add-on also?
Yes. So it would be the base bid, which is the Cole Parkway Marina Project for eight-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand, five-hundred dollars, and the add-alternate number-one maritime center pilings for a hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand, three-hundred dollars.
Great. And if you can just give a thirty-second overview of what the project actually is to everyone that hasn't read this.
Yeah. What it is, is today, the Cole Parkway Marina is held with chain and stone, similar to a mooring for a boat. So the marina moves around kind of in a circular motion and goes up and down. This would keep the marina, so it just goes up and down on pilings. Also, we're adding an eighty-foot-long gangway to make the marina much more accessible. It would make it ADA accessible as far as the gangway is concerned, so more people can enjoy the marina and use the marina more comfortably. It also makes the marina much more secure by holding it with the pilings rather than the chain and stone. We're also able to leave the marina in place during the winter months so that it doesn't have to go into the parking lot or be taken apart and moved across to the Maritime Center, and we would de-ice the way we have been with the Maritime Center, which has been successful for the past three years.
And the add-on is to do the same thing over to the Maritime Center?
Yeah. The Maritime Center has pilings today. The pilings were bought, used, I believe, is what I was told. They're not quite tall enough. During the January seventeen storm, I went over during the height of the storm, and there was about a foot and a half left of pile, and that really is not very good. So if it was a hurricane under load, we could have a real problem over there. So while we were doing the project, we thought that we should replace the piles over there, save on the mobilization and demobilization costs while they were doing the project across the way.
And how are we paying for it?
Eighty percent, or about seventy-five percent of the funds for the Cole Parkway Project are coming from Seaport. The Waterways Enterprise Fund is paying for the remainder. Twenty-seven thousand, we got for an ADA grant for the gangway, and the Situit Maritime Center is being paid for out of the Waterways Enterprise Fund.
The whole?
The whole, yes.
And that's already passed, right? That's already?
Yes. Yeah, that was, we got that money a few years ago. We've just been waiting for these projects to, everything's kind of coming together.
Karen, any questions?
No, it's good.
Karen?
I'd just like to thank Steve, Sean, everyone involved. As we know, this took a long time. We would get the age of we are today. So Waterways Commission passed one of these, passed chain and frame, and backed to corner. Thank you very much. It's going to make the money just more valuable, it's going to be a better marina.
Safer, more secure. It'll just be a better system.
Great. Well, it's great that we got seventy-five percent of it paid for by the state, so awesome. Can I have a motion?
Move that the Board?
For the Board of Selectmen award the Cole Parkway Marina Rehab Project to Sea White Marine Incorporated of Gannett, Massachusetts, one million, one million, twenty thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Second, my Ms. Canfield. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Thank you, guys. When's it going to start?
Um, there, I'm going to be driving up the bid, oh, the contract documents to Danvers tomorrow. We don't want to continue to lose days. And as soon as the documents are executed, then those to proceed will be.
Will it be in this summer?
It will be. It'll be.
It'll be in the next couple of weeks.
Project will be. They're going to do it this spring.
We're going to have it done before the, we're going to have it done before the marina opens.
May fifteenth, it'll be complete.
Great. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
If it's not complete by then, we'll have a room full of voters.
All right, Sean. We are going to talk about some DPW contracts now.
The roadway management contract is a contract we typically join the MAPC contract. They prepare the bid documents. Most of the roadway management, tasks that they perform include the milling of the roadways, the placement of asphalt. It had to go out to rebid this year rather than an extension. T.L. Edwards did come back in as the winner, who has been the contractor for the last several years, with an increase in his asphalt prices, at least the binder anyways, went up twelve dollars a ton from what he was at the last two years. Most of his other prices that we use went up by cents. It does allow us to complete a lot of the roadway work without needing to procure the services. When we use the MAPC contracts, they're part of a regional bid process. So with multiple municipalities inputting quantities, contractors can reduce their We enjoy those reduction in prices by signing on with these MAPC contracts. The Metro Area Planning Council prepares annually.
So what was the, what was the tar before? Is twelve pounds, twelve dollars a doubling of it, or is it?
Seventy-eight dollars a ton.
So seventy up?
Over the last two years.
Seventy up to ninety?
To ninety, yeah, twelve dollars.
Is that the one million dollar, there's one of these line items is a million dollars, billion and five?
When they price these, these are estimated quantities from all of the municipalities that participate.
Oh, this isn't just us?
This isn't just Situit, no. This is the season, really. This will run until the fall, or when the plants close in December. Yeah, they'll be running from here to Cohasset to hand over to.
Okay. So just so everyone knows, there's like four pages of very small detail.
I tried to blow that up, too.
Sean?
I was just going to ask, can Sean just pick off some roads? I, is that what these are? I can't see.
No, those are, okay, it's like tar and.
Okay.
Stop, most of it.
Curb, patching.
Okay.
Could you just pick off some roads that you might hit this summer?
That Kevin's been looking at?
Have you finished the list yet?
Yeah, he's been working with Mike and looking at what they have for the chapter of AD funds and what we have.
He's going to come up with that list beginning of March or so, middle of March.
Once we finish up, there's still some loose ends on two of the water main contracts and a third one to start this spring. But there'll be a lot of the pavement replacement on those roadways, as well as a handful of others. Yeah, Kevin and Mike have been going through it, so.
Any questions on the briefcase?
No. Just for my education, so the contract for the minor parking lot?
Yeah.
Is not, is outside of this scope? This is for maintenance and normal?
Yeah.
Normal?
Different project.
Well, the contractor could be part of this, building it, right?
This contract could bid on it, yes, but it's not under the contract.
Right, not under the contract.
Right. It's a separate bidding contract, that's correct.
So my only question was, once you add all these up and compare it to last year, did the net price of all these materials go up what percent?
Well, it's hard to compare all of them only because the quantities change. Whenever they put this back out to bid, they reach out to the twelve of us municipalities and say, "What do you think you're going to do this year?" And that's the sum they come up with. The few that I looked at are the ones we typically use this contract to do. We have other contracts for installing signs, which they have listed here. We could use this price, we could use the other contracted price we have.
So we don't have to use this? This is just locking us in over us?
Correct. From preparing a bid spec, plans, details, putting something out to bid to get other prices on, or you can go to this.
Can I have a motion?
Move that the Board of Selectmen award the roadway management contract to T.L. Edwards for the twenty-twenty construction season.
Second.
Second, my Ms. Conley. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous.
Aye, sorry.
Aye, it is unanimous.
I was reading the next motion. I'm sorry.
Four and nothing, it's unanimous. By the way, I was remiss, I should have said that Ms. Kern is not here tonight because she has a work event that she couldn't get out of, so that's why there's only four of us here this evening. Great. Second one, Sean?
Second one is for the installation of a timber steelback guardrail along Glades Road in North Situit, between Gannett and Bailey's Causeway. We have homes on the east, west side of the road and the ocean on the right side. The director has identified that as a safety concern, and we began the process of using the MAPC contract for a guardrail install and received a price for that. That would be your typical stainless chrome guardrail with steel posts. Once we looked at the aesthetics of a typical guardrail, we started to research the timber guardrail. The MAPC contract did not have an item for timber guardrail, so we prepared a bid spec and put that out onto the street and advertised for a timber guardrail. The one company that did respond to the bid is the contractor that holds the MAPC contract for a regular guardrail, although substantially higher in price, although much more aesthetically pleasing. We did, there are some photos in the packet of a timber guardrail that was recently installed by this contractor in Weston that were included in the package, as well as some additional photos from the various types of guardrail available.
Great. We, yeah, we got that.
Well, fool around comparing with Weston on this one, okay? Top notch.
Not a good sign.
Karen, any comments?
I have a couple of questions and a couple of comments. First is the necessity of doing that entire span for safety's sake. I know when I went out, and I live in that neighborhood, so when I go out and look at it, you know, down towards Bailey's Causeway, there's, there's a lot of land between the road and the beach. So I was concerned, especially with the ticket price, that if, if safety is the driving motivation for this, which I'll come back to, that perhaps the scope is a little overkill for what would be needed there. Especially in some places, there's also a boardwalk with a railing, and I know it's not going to stop a car, but it's, I don't, I'm not a traffic engineer, but it seems to me that maybe the scope is a little more than necessary. If it's an aesthetic reason, then that's a different conversation. The second question I have is on the safety. So as far as I'm aware, there's never been an incident on that stretch of road that would require additional security. It isn't, I mean, typically when we, we talk about stop signs and lights and improving safety, it's because there's a problem area. This is a very large expense for an area that I'm not, I mean, I, I think I need to be convinced a little bit more that it's a necessary place, given that I drive that road every day. As far as the aesthetics, should we go forward with this? I think that you did a great job in illustrating that, you know, the timber is far superior for that beautiful stretch of property. If, if we were to put a guardrail there, that I think that that was well researched. It does, it, it doesn't, how high does it stand to come up off the ground?
Typically, the top of the rail is thirty inches off the ground.
Yeah, so it's not very imposing. Yeah, so it's not very imposing. Those are my comments, and I guess it wasn't a question.
When we put the bid together, it is by the foot, and we had an estimated amount of the 1,500 feet. But I know the new pocket park that went in, if you want to call it that, right, you could shorten that up to maybe the next walkway entrance if you're trying to, where it's not as severe. See what you mean, though, short.
Because the current spec, I would assume, well, let me ask you, in the current spec, what happens with the closed stairs? Does the rail extend across that section?
No, each of those entrances will have an opening.
Okay. Even if they're still closed?
Because you can get down to the walkway.
Oh, that's right, because the boardwalk, okay.
I mean, this came up in parts, just, I don't want to take too much time. It came up in parts because Kevin and I were down there during a storm, and Kevin said, we're going to end up in the goddamn ocean. The waves were coming up, they were washing out of the street, and there's nothing there. There's literally nothing there between you except a six-inch curb. And we looked at it, just because no one's gone over, it's getting worse down there, the storms are getting worse, the waves are getting higher. And we just thought it was, it's a problem. We think it's a problem, it should be addressed. But it was, my Kevin, I don't know, my insurance is paid, we're going to get out of here. But it was, it was really bad, and we're concerned that someone's going to be down there in bad weather, and they're going to go, and that sidewalk, whatever you call it, that railing, isn't going to stop anybody from going. And we actually do have a picture of a car in the water, but he went down the opening where we get, he saw it right down out of the beach into the ocean. So that's where it came from.
I can understand it. I can also understand that if next year someone does go over, we'll be sitting here saying, why didn't we do it? Do the neighbors have any thoughts about this? I mean, anytime you do anything, anywhere related to constructing anything, people go crazy. Have the abutters, all the people who live along there, been asked their opinions?
No, we haven't gone to the abutters. We generally wouldn't go to the abutters on something we think is safety. If it was just something we were doing for aesthetic value, then we would have gone back to the abutters and said, hey, we're thinking of doing this, but as a safety thing, that's why we specked out this guardrail.
Right.
You see similar guardrails in Norwell. Those are not compliant, they don't have the steel backing, they're just wooden guardrails. So we wouldn't put something like that up because then you're liable if somebody hits that and something happens. But from an aesthetic standpoint, as Sean said, it's 30 inches as high, it's not going to block anybody's view, it's actually going to provide people a lot of places to sit on and enjoy.
I was just thinking, fence blocking, you know, yeah.
Yeah, but...
Sean?
Sean doesn't like it.
To say the least. You're talking about some of the nicest views in this town. And people who drive a lot, 30 inches wide would be kind of high for sure. So, but I just, thank you for thinking of the safety thing, I just think there are, you know, while raising the town, I think there are those places where we could better spend it. And you're destroying $12,000 on this, how far would that go on roads? So, and while your traffic is going parallel with the ocean, 50% of the roads are perpendicular, 50% of the traffic on the roads perpendicular to the ocean are going away from the ocean. So, all right? So, and there is the guardrail, unless you go, unless you want to land on mighty beach and you got, you could, but it would, it would, it's just not, I think we could spend the money better on...
Yeah, I mean, my only response to the scenic is, the lighthouse is one of the most scenic places in town, too, and we built a 10, 12-foot wall that completely blocks the view of the ocean because of safety reasons. So this is nowhere near as obtrusive as that, but I, we've talked about this, Sean.
What's the funding?
Chapter 90.
Chapter 90 and roadway money, yeah.
How much chapter money, 90 money do you get a year? 500?
Yeah, five and a half.
Five and a half.
Yeah.
So it's almost half.
Five and a half, 550,000?
Yeah.
Or five and a half million?
Five and a half million would be payment, everything.
So we have to, we can let that build up over time and do a project later on, we don't have to spend it all the time.
Which we do.
Right, right, no, we let it build up to a bigger project.
I'll tell you what, let's put this on hold. Does that make sense? And let us think about it more and come back.
Wait till Mars is here.
Let more decide.
I don't know, do you guys want to, I feel the same way that you guys do, I think there's other priorities.
I think it's a substantial contract, and if maybe the whole board would be appropriate to have that conversation. I also, you know...
I was just trying to walk out smoothly, but I don't think we have to wait till tomorrow to vote. If you guys, if you guys want to go for it, you can vote for that, and if it's...
And then the other thing, one bidder, you know, that's that one view.
You can't control that if only one person bids, but if you vote no, I'm just going to drive Kevin's truck off it. Not with Kevin in the stock. You already wrecked that truck once.
Does someone want to make a motion?
It'll be an old truck.
All right, so no one wants to make a motion, so we will move on to the next item.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you, Sean.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
The next is, we're back to the town operating budget, and the first topic for discussion is Economic Development Commission. RJ?
I'm doing all right, how are you guys doing? It's very good, folks. Oh, my pleasure. I don't have much else going on on a Tuesday night.
The debate's on.
Yeah.
So tell us about your budget.
What's up?
Tell us about your budget.
So before IJ starts, the economic development budget is a percentage of the mealstax. So in my budget, they got 3,000 less than they got last year because that's the percentage of the mealstax. However, in my restorations, I'm proposing to restore them back to their level funding for this year, for the upcoming fiscal year. So before IJ lambasts me for cutting his budget by $3,000, I am proposing to put that back in.
And we would appreciate that. We've been very involved in what's going on in the town and trying to do more so than in years past, and I feel we've really got a full head of steam going with us right now. Most recently, we have completed tasks like the new wayfaring sign, or wayfinding signs in, around in town. We were also a part of the Green Bush rezoning and are currently a part of the North Situate rezoning, which we're working on with the planning board. We are also working on, as far as long-term goals, the town master plan, the harbor resiliency and sustainability plan, as well as the coastal planning. In the more short term, we've also been very urgent in assigning liaisons from our commission to different committees throughout the town and each of the business districts, so that way we have a better pulse, finger on the pulse of what's going on around town, and you can better respond and help and distribute funds, you know, to committees that need it. For example, we gave additional funding to the harbor merchants for their holidays in the harbor to help make things a bit more festive. We've given money to the West Court Committee to better advertise what they do. We have also helped fund the winter farmer's market, just to name a few things. And, yeah, we've looking to keep going forward. Like I said, we're working on the North Situate rezoning. We are looking, we'd like to set up a webpage that would help, and a business packet that would help new businesses that are looking to come to Situate, help direct them in what they need to do, where they need to go, really help encourage them to set up and make the process a lot smoother for them. We are also trying to craft a plan for better communicating what we in the town are doing and what we're trying to do with the town's population in order to help smooth out messaging and try and control the narrative that's going on.
Great. Jim, do you have the actual numbers?
I don't.
And how much is left over from, that hasn't been spent?
This year?
No, well, it accumulates every year, right?
The mealstax?
No, the, in their budget. It doesn't go to free cash?
Yeah, it does. It's a regular budget, regular operating budget. We appropriated whatever's left over, go away to free cash. I don't think that's, it's not a revolving fund or a reserve fund, or it's just a regular budget item.
That is my understanding as well.
Yeah, it's a regular budget item.
Okay. So it's 49,000?
Yes.
Forty-six and then coming up slightly.
Right.
So how much did they spend last year?
Nancy's.
Nancy?
Okay, so, so the actuals two years ago was the full $50,000.
Yes.
Yeah, they generally spend close to all their budget.
Yeah, this year, I think we're down to some, we're looking to get the exact number from Sherry, but I believe we're somewhere around 7,000 left.
And some of that is earmarked for some North Situate work.
Yeah.
So Nancy, at one point in time, did this not go back to free cash? I remember at one point, the economic...
Yeah, their general fund budget closes out to free cash at the end of the year, anything that is unspent or encumbered.
But that's not the way it used to be, I don't think.
No, it always was. Anything that's a general fund budget will close out, close out. They also have a stabilization fund, and that stays static, and that has a little over $30,000 in it.
So there's $30,000 in stability?
Yeah, so if a big project came forward, they would need a town meeting vote to access it, but they have funds that they could bring to the town, applying to.
I am aware that our budget also was reduced by roughly half to facilitate Brad Washburn and his position, so...
Any questions?
Just a comment, I have been working as the liaison for this group, and one of the things, the strength of this committee is, is exactly as RJ said, is working collaboratively so that everybody's rowing in the same direction. And I believe that in like the next, probably in April, I spoke with the chair, that they'd like to come before the board with, with more of a, fleshing out some of the ideas that these just presented, that I think are very exciting about pulling together community groups as well as...
Yeah, we're looking to, in addition to us working more closely with each of the committees around town, we're also looking to try and facilitate those groups working more in concert with each other. For example, the harbor merchants and the Chamber of Commerce, working collaboratively towards a single goal, try and help everything move a lot bit more smoothly and more efficiently in town.
Great. Sean, anyone? No?
No, but thank you for the effort.
Yeah, great, I love the fact that you're very active. The one thing I'd like to see if you could bring back to your committee to add to the list, and we talked about this at some meetings, I don't know if it ever got back to you, is to look into uses of the Old Gate School, you know, maybe have just another group's mind kind of brainstorming in terms of some stuff that's going on there.
Absolutely, yeah.
Actually, in their conversations, they've got that and some of the other facilities on their long-term things about this, so.
Great.
Trying to.
Awesome. Great, well, thanks for coming in.
All right.
Thank you very much. We're voting the budgets later on tonight, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next item is the Community Preservation Act Committee. Dan Fenley's the chair.
Acting Chair.
You keep saying that.
I know, you keep jumping back for that.
Is there an acting chair? So you have a presentation, right, Dan?
I do.
That we have the PowerPoint for?
Yep. It was separate.
Yeah.
It came as a separate.
Yep.
Okay.
So Dan Fenley, Ten Hundred and Crossing. I am the acting chair for the CPC. I was, I inherited the job when the previous chair had left. Can we keep the lights up? I don't know if this is...
Drew, can you turn on the light?
Jim is sneaking out.
Who are you referring to, Dan?
I think you'll be able to see.
Yeah.
Mr. Meyerson.
Oh, right.
So thank you, first of all, thank you for giving the committee the opportunity to present to you and talk about what we've been doing for the past year and some of the projects we have coming up. The picture I'm putting up on the screen there is the Wampanoak Playground, which was a 2018 project and finished in about 14 months. Very quick and efficient project and very successful. We, we did receive Valentine's Day cards from the students at the school, and that was very nice of the school to do that. What I'd like to do tonight is first talk about some of the financials that we have, where we are from a financial standpoint, because last year, as you all know, we spent about eight and a half, 8.6 million dollars. And there was concerns about depleting the funds for CPC. So I'm here to tell you that didn't happen, number one, and to show you where we are today. First of all, these are a picture of the state grants amount, state grant amounts that have happened over the past year, so they're up and down for various reasons over the years. This year, we got $417,000 from the state cumulative in the life of CPC. The grants from the state have been eight and a half million dollars. So the town has received from the state eight and a half million dollars through this program over the years. The estimate for next year is $614,000. I think that's a little bit high, but that's what the CPA Commission is saying right now, that they're expecting a 37.2% increase, and that comes out to 600,000. So if you look at that, it's definitely an upswing in the numbers from several years ago, and that's mostly due to the state collecting more fees for this program and distributing more money to the program than they have in the past.
Plus, we're still a 3% community.
Yes. So if you look at the next slide, this number here, the 3% you just mentioned for Situate is 1.6 million. I'm not going to go through all the, all the numbers, but round them up. 1.6 million is a 3%, that gets collected through the taxes. There are some adjustments to that every year, some of the investment income and other expenses that get calculated by the town. The expected amount for next year is six, as I said before, is $614,000, and that is the match of 37.2% that the state is telling us we should receive next year. Again, I think that's a little high, but from 4,000 to 6,000, it's somewhere in between there, I would suspect. So the total for the estimated revenues for next year is 2.3 million dollars. What, the way the program works is we're required by law to set aside 10% of that money into what I'll call three buckets, one for historic purposes, one for open space, and one for community housing. So that's $230,000 that will be dedicated to those three programs within the CPC program. We're allowed to use up to 5% for administrative purposes. Situate CPC has never gone that high nor requested that high, so we're anticipating 2.5%, and that's $57,000 and change for administrative expenses, which includes, you know, everything from salaries to might be doing an appraisal of some property that we have to incur the cost for. In my experience, we've never even gotten close to this type of amount. I believe it's been in the $30,000 range or less every year, but this is what we allocate for the program. If you look at the next slide, and the top four columns on that, I'll... If you look at the next slide, and the top four columns on that, I'll call it a spreadsheet, are the amounts left over from last year. So when you look at nine hundred thousand dollars in historic, et cetera, one point two million in undesignated funds, there is about three million dollars that were left, that was left over from last year, even after spending the eight million, eight point six million dollars. If you take the two point three million dollars of the estimated receipts, that gives us a total balance of five million dollars and change to use for this year. If you go further down the spreadsheet to the right, those four columns are really adjustments that, that are made by law, and they're adjustments because the last two years, in FY nineteen and FY twenty, the holdback, the ten percent holdback that we did was underestimated, and it was underestimated because we actually got more money from the state. So we were short on what we had to estimate, and that is detailed. If you look at the next slide, in the presentation, that's detailed on this slide here, where these were the amounts that were withheld in 2019 and 2020, and the amounts that we actually got, and therefore there was a shortfall of about thirty thousand dollars, and last year, about twenty-two thousand dollars shortfall. So that has to go, we have to go back and put that money back into those buckets, if you will. So that's what that shortfall is when you get to, when you get to these amounts here, these four amounts. Does everybody get that?
Yeah, so the ten percent's for each bucket, not collectively?
Yes. So it will, for those three buckets, the historic, open space, and.
Affordable.
Affordable housing.
Uh, housing. Okay. And that's, that's required by law.
Right.
So we have to do that. The next amount, which is seven hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred dollars, is what CPC Situate voted on to pay off the loan that we took as part of the amounts we had last year. As, as you're aware, we had, we took out a loan of three point oh-eight million dollars, and this is a estimated fund balance over the years. If we paid it off in ten years, the first amount for this year would be three hundred and eight thousand plus one hundred thousand, one hundred dollars, or four hundred and eight thousand, one hundred dollars, if you take the interest and the principal due for the first year. The second year, three hundred and eight thousand dollars. We haven't paid the interest on that. And what we could do, what CPC could have done with this is, number one, do nothing on the loan. Number two, pay off one year on the loan, and number three, pay off two years on the loan. We decided that we wanted to pay down the loan as soon as we can, so we're allocating seven hundred and sixteen thousand dollars toward the payoff of the loan. Okay, and that was voted on in previous meetings. And that's what that seven hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred dollars is on the balance sheet. The next four amounts are the, are the, I'm sorry. The next four amounts are the adjustments to the set aside. The first four were the actual set aside. These are the adjustments that we had of five thousand dollars, thirty thousand, twenty-five, and twenty-five for FY nineteen and FY twenty. So I misspoke on the earlier four amounts. And that's what, that's what those are. The actual amount for FY twenty was somewhere around twenty-two thousand, but to be conservative, Nancy suggested we put aside twenty-five thousand. So that's how we got those numbers. Any questions on that? The next three amounts are the projects that we, that we currently have in the queue for the town meeting, and they are three projects which I'll go into some detail on. Before we go on, I just wanted to make sure everybody understood what we're looking at here. And with those three amounts, that still gives us a balance of one point six million dollars to carry over for next year, and then that does not include the monies that we would expect next year, which are approximately two million dollars. So going into next year, even if we, the town votes on spending all this amount, we'll still have over three million dollars in the, in the fund to spend for the town. Okay?
I do have one question, Dan, on that spreadsheet. The two column, the two projects, the one on the bottom for five twenty-four.
Yes.
And the one for three fifteen, they're in the estimated receipts column.
Yes.
And it, although I know you probably could put it there, but every project has to fall into one of those four buckets.
Yes.
So.
Well, the actual amount for that last one is five hundred and seventy-five thousand. Okay, if you look to the right column, and that's just using up all the estimated receipts first, and then going to the amount left over the remaining funds in the, in the bucket.
Yeah, it's just, it's hard to see what you're selling, what you're spending this year. You know, if those were over, then you could see that it's nine hundred thousand, and you could add, add the spend. Like, I'm trying to see, the balance, so the balance, the starting balance, if you don't put the receipts in, was about two point seven million dollars. And the ending balance is going to be one point seven million dollars. So we spent a million dollars more than we brought in this year.
Correct. So if you look at those.
Although some of it's going to, that's.
Yeah.
Some of it actually goes to the buckets, so it's maybe four hundred thousand dollars. Yeah.
Something like that, yeah. I'm not sure, doing the math that way. But if you look at the, the right column, the three that I highlighted on the presentation, so three hundred fifteen, nine hundred and five seventy-five is the total for the three projects that we have this year. So that's about. One point eight million that we're looking to go to town meeting with.
Right, plus the debt.
Plus the debt, the nine, the seven hundred and sixteen thousand.
But you doubled up payment on the debt, so you're.
Two years of payment.
So you're cutting from ten to five.
We haven't paid anything off on that. It just happened last year.
Right.
And that's the, the principal for the first two years, as well as the interest on the first year.
Right.
And, and the committee felt it was important to try and get rid of that debt as soon as we can. And we do have the money to do it, so why not pay off two years? So we also have open projects that are out there right now, just to complete the picture. There's about three point six million dollars in projects that haven't been completed. That money has already been allocated in previous town meetings. The biggest three are the senior Lawson Tower Housing for one point nine million, which should be commencing very shortly. I'm told within a month or so. They, they're looking to start construction on that project. And then we're still working on two open space acquisitions of Sunset Road, the, the property across from the Mill Wharf and the Harbor, as well as the Maxwell Trust land acquisition on the West End, which has been quite some time. But they're getting close to being able to close on that property, is what I'm told. So those are the open projects. We're going to rescind four of the amounts that are left over in those projects. We've contacted every one of these projects that was close to completion and asked if we could close that out, and some of the older ones still have some additional bills that are waiting to come in and apply to the funds that were allocated to them. So the projects that we voted on to rescind, there are four, told about thirty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars. All the projects were completed except the Lawson Tower evaluation, and that was withdrawn for whatever purpose. Okay. So we will get back thirty-six thousand, seven hundred this year. Hopefully, a town, if the town meeting approves it. So the three projects that are coming up, and these are the ones that are approved. We did have a couple of other projects that were put in that either weren't approved or were withdrawn. So these are the three that were voted. The first one is the PJ Steverman Skate Park. It was a facility that was given, gifted to the town in nineteen ninety-six. It's been maintained by the Steverman family. It's a very heavily used facility, and it's used all year round, unless it's snowing out or you can't get onto the, to the skate park. It requires major rehabilitation. If you go out and look at it, some of the boards have holes in it. The new surf, the surface needs redoing. The Steverman family will continue to provide some of the facilities, some of the things for the facility that they have in the past, like gold nets, bench repairs, and plaques. And the Friends of.
Thank you.
Bless you.
Thank you.
The Friends of Situate Recreation will be donating ten thousand dollars to the town. They will, as you know, every year, we've asked all these projects to put some skin in the game, and various organizations come up with ten thousand dollars or twenty thousand as part of the project. One of the issues we've had with CPC facility projects is the maintenance. So I think that Jim and Nancy came up with a very creative solution, and what, and you can't, as you know, you can't use CPC money for maintenance. So the very creative solution, I thought that was, arrived that by Jim and Nancy, was to have the organization donate the money to the town and put it aside in a separate fund that will be used for maintenance of that facility. I think that's a great solution to the maintenance issues that we've had, and it's something that we'll use as a precedent for future CPC projects. And this has been supported by many, many town organizations, too many to even list on the slide there. So I, I think it's a very worthwhile project. Any questions?
On that project?
Yes.
Any questions on the previous, well, maybe later, the previous slide, any question?
Okay.
Any questions on the Steverman part?
No.
Okay. So just give us a bit of, is it still going to just be the hockey? We're going to replace it, redo the surface, redo the boards?
Yes, basically a rehabilitation of the existing facility.
Fence up like there is.
Yes.
Behind the nets. I mean, the place gets so much use.
Yes.
It's, it's, in the condition it is because it's used so much, so.
Yes.
It's a, it's an asset of the town.
The second project, the, the whole committee's very excited about, is brought to us by the Historic Commission. It's the Mordecai Lincoln Property, and the proposal is to purchase the property from the existing owner. This is a property that's historic. It's probably one of the most significant privately-owned historic properties in Situate right now. It houses, there's three, four buildings on the property. There's a main home that was built in sixteen ninety-five. There's a smaller home that was built in the eighteen hundreds, and there's also a mill and what's called a shed, sometimes called a shed, that's on the property. So there's four buildings on the property. It's being offered to the, by the owner, to the town, at, I think, an incredible price, looking at nine hundred thousand dollars for five point six acres of ocean, of sea, of waterfront property. It's a beautiful location on the Gulf River in North Situate. It's located very close to the North Situate Center, and it's, the main house was the home to the great, great, great grandfather of Abraham Lincoln. Mordecai Lincoln was the son of Samuel Lincoln. Samuel Lincoln was the very first Lincoln to come over from England. He settled in Hingham, and then his son, Mordecai, moved to Situate, started his own business, operated a mill there for many years, and the property's been maintained by a family, some of who live on the property and caretake the property, and I believe they've been there for over sixty years, and they're looking to sell the property to the town to maintain the historical value of the property. The plan's being developed for maintenance and programmatic use of the property. There's potential for recreational use of the property, certainly open space. If you go behind the house, again, just a beautiful lawn going down to the river. You can see that where the property's located here, not a very good picture, but it's right on the, the Gulf River and surrounded on three sides by water. So there's passive recreation use as well as perhaps act, active recreation use. I put this picture up. It's a, it's a postcard from nineteen twelve, which actually shows a gentleman canoeing down the river with the house in the background. And that is the house that's still there today. The porch is no longer there, but that's still the same house that's on the property that was built in sixteen ninety-five. It's just a beautiful location. There's potential for rental with caretakers living on the property and income to the town. And there would be a conservation restriction that would be held by Wildland Trust on the property, and we felt there was some urgency to the purchase of the property because it's just, I think, an incredible deal. I mean, I said, if the town doesn't buy it, I want to buy it, okay? It's just a great location, a great property, has historic value, and I think the town could make very good use of it.
Dan, do you want to start the meeting?
I couldn't agree more on this property, and I think, given the progress we're making on North Situate development, to have open space adjacent to what's going to be potentially a very vibrant economic center, it's just a win-win for the legacy of this town, because, you know, if all goes well, you know, we're, we're going to see a lot more housing in the, right by the transit center, and this is a spitaway to be able to use it. And I could think of a million things that could be developed for it down the road as a town asset. So, you know, kudos to everybody that jumped all over this, because I think it's, I, I agree with you one percent.
Sean?
When I first heard about it, I saw the emails going back before I called Tony, and I said, oh, jeez, what do we want to buy this for, you know?
Speaking of the mic.
I said, you know, what do we want to buy this for? I've been buying it a million times in the front, but I have never seen it. And then, oh, yeah, call Penny. She'll meet you up there twenty-four hours a day and show you how wonderful this is. So I said, all right, I'll take her up on it. So I parked in the driveway, and I walked up there. If you didn't buy it, Penny would buy it. Everyone, Karen said she would, and I'm not afraid that there'll be a forty B there and there'll be twenty or thirty units there. That doesn't scare me, you know, because I think the person, if that was on the open market, first of all, it is, you don't need an appraisal. Being at it for nine hundred thousand dollars, I think all of us would agree it's well worth nine hundred thousand dollars. I see someone building three or four houses there. They're going to be real nice houses, and they'll pay a lot of taxes. But the, so walk in the property, so a couple of things that changed my mind, and I did change my mind, Tony, sorry. But Penny said, you know, there's, there is rental income. I know a little bit about that. And I know this is not your typical house, because there are strings attached, like the lighthouse. The people there may pay a little less because they're, they're in a fishbowl. These people are going to have to realize that, too, whoever rents these properties. And that's why I, that's the only reason I'd sell it, is be, you know, the only reason I'm jumping on board is if you could, and Dan's not exaggerating, you can, this, there has to be hundreds of feet of frontage along the Gulf River that you can launch a kayak. So those people that are renting those houses have to realize there'll be constant traffic. And it won't be a paved road, but some type of crescendo or something like that to let people access it. And it would, it must take a day to cut the lawn. I can only imagine. So, you know, picnic benches up there, there is tons of open space up there for people to go up and enjoy. I don't see people walking from the train station up there. I don't see it, but it doesn't matter. It would be a pretty well-kept neat secret for the people in that neighborhood and the people that know it's there. So, you know, again, I, I think it's, I think it's worth, well worth nine hundred thousand dollars. And I, you know, I don't think it's going to carry itself. You're not going to get nine thousand dollars a month rent for those houses, but anywhere close. Then my next, you know, so my next concern was what you alluded to earlier, maintenance. For years, we've all sat here and listened to Dave Ball and Doug, and it's all legitimate concerns. It needs a roof. It needs siding. And, you know, these buildings are going to. They're in good shape now, but it's good, they're going to need repairs down. They're in good shape now, but it's good, they're gonna need repairs down the road.
Yep, and just, uh, to that point, uh, this property does have, it has been very well-kept up. Uh, there's a fairly new roof on it, uh, they've done siding, you know, they have very well, uh, kept up the property over, over the years, and have put a lot of resources into it.
I, I saw that, and it's evident. That, you know, we didn't go in the basement and look at cells or anything, but it almost can tell if they did that on the outside, they did it on the inside. You know, they, they did keep it up. So, I, I, I'm guilty of changing my mind, so, whatever, but I, I had, I had to see it. If it was two million dollars, that might be a different story, you know, but nine hundred thousand dollars is, any, any developer would buy it for nine hundred thousand, that's for sure, in a hobby, so. I don't know what else I can say. I changed my mind, Tony, sorry, you know?
Karen?
Well, seeing is believing, and, um, I actually think that, once we get the sewer to North Situate and we can get some more businesses down there, you might actually find people picking up a lunch and taking a walk down Mordecai Lincoln and walking up there and having a picnic. Um, Situate does have experience renting out historic properties, and to put a fine point on all of this, we are the community, you are, we are all the Community Preservation Committee, and this is a sterling example of preserving history and preserving land, and especially land like this that is so unique. Not to disparage the West End, but, you know, there's a lot of woods out there. This is an open field, and it, the views, I, I was out there in the summer, and there were still, you know, a lot of leaves on the trees. I haven't been out there in the winter, and I'm sure it's even more amazing to see it. So, my hope is, is that before town meeting, we can organize a few days where people can actually come and look and see it and understand it, because if you don't see it, even, you know, as much as the, the slides show you, you have to see it. And, um, and I, I also would like to say that I really appreciate the owners being willing to sell it for less than they could get for it. I think significantly less than they could get for it, and that's very community-minded, community-spirited, and, um, no, I, I think they, they're to be commended. They're to be commended. I, I just, I think it's a wonderful thing that people are willing to, you know, to make the effort to help us preserve a really important property and the housing, you know, the, the buildings on the property, so. Tony?
So, I went and looked at the property also. Penny took me out there and had her sales gear on, and she was already selling me on it, and then Doug came and kind of had the reality of what's going on. So, the property's spectacular. I mean, it's, it's really a beautiful piece of land. The historical significance is, is off the charts, right? You've got a relationship to one of the most famous presidents in the, in the United States, and the house is probably one of the oldest in town, you know, it's the sixteen hundreds, not even our, it's, you know, mine's eighteen thirty, and it makes that look, uh, young. So, that's right. I mean, Sean brought up, you know, the other side of the equation is, there could be four beautiful houses there that are paying, you know, sixty, seventy thousand dollars a year in taxes. You know, that's, that's the other side of the story, but, um, it's a beautiful, open space, it's a historical building, it's really well-kept. Um, I don't know what we'd do with the space. I think we kinda have to brainstorm and figure out what it is, 'cause it's open. So, it's not like trails. It's, it's a unique piece of land that we don't have. You know, we've got, like, somebody said, trails all over the place that you can walk, but this isn't that. This is really a, a place to, um, do something. And the launching on the river is, is there as well, so, um, I think it's a great investment for the town personally, and, and I think we've seen a lot of property come through town, Sean and I, over the years, and the price tag always hits us first, and we're like, "Whoa, a million dollars," or whatever, and I think, after we both looked at it, we said, "This is, this is definitely, you know, a value for the town at that, at that thing." So, I, I completely agree with the rest of you that it's a, it's a, I think, a good investment for the town, so. So, I think you've got support for it, for it from the board, anyways. Who knows? Sean may flip again.
I just wanna change.
All right, Dan.
So, the last project we have, and I'll wrap up the presentation quickly, is the, the second phase of the Countryway Trails, uh, which was requested by a gentleman who lives right off of Countryway and is looking, uh, to have this project completed. Uh, this was identified, the multi-use trail, in two thousand seven. The project was, uh, to, the initial project was to construct the trail on Countryway from First Parish to Green Bush. Uh, the phase one of the project, which included the design of Phase One and Phase Two, and the construction of Phase One was completed in two thousand sixteen. It's a, uh, trail from First Parish Road to Huey Road. Um, I said to Karen, I call it the Road to Nowhere now, um, but the Phase Two was halted, and this is a project that was brought back up to finish, uh, Phase Two of the project. There's thirty-one hundred feet left from Huey Road to Green Bush, and Sean McCarthy was kind enough to re, re-cost the estimate of that, which is five hundred and seventy-five thousand, which includes a buffer of about fifty thousand dollars for contingencies, and that's, that project.
Do you have a map of where it is?
Um, I didn't include it in the presentation. It's included in the application, which is online. It's not, not very readable, but basically from Huey Road down to, uh, almost all the way to the circle, but not quite. The Green Bush Circle. On Countryway.
Right.
Tony, so if you're coming from, um-
From like the old days.
Ronnie Shones, if you're coming from Ronnie Shones, you get almost to the crest of the hill where you can see over to Marshville, and it's about that area where it stops.
So, is it on the side of the road where we did the sidewalk?
That's a multipurpose trail.
Yes.
Yes.
That is not a sidewalk, that's multipurpose.
That's right, 'cause we have the slalom poles in the middle of the sidewalk.
Yes, right.
I know, but, yeah.
But what I don't know is if it switches over to the other side.
I'm not sure where, I'd, I'd have to go back and look at the initial design, and I'm sure when, you know, DPW gets to it, and this is something I think they're gonna be able to do, and, and immediately with all the things on their plate, I'm sure they're gonna look at, at perhaps reevaluating what the situation is with the pathway going down.
So, it's gonna go from Huey all the way down to-
To, almost the circle.
Well, to, well, to Green Bush, because, uh, when you get to Green Bush-
The sidewalk picks up, so, past the, to the brewery-
Yes.
Area.
Yes.
And then-
Right about there.
Okay, so my, go ahead, you know what, I'll let you guys start first. Karen, do you have any?
Well, I mean, um, a citizen came, uh, talked to me about a year and a half ago about it, and I explained the, the situation. Uh, it got stopped because Norwalk got sued over using CPC funds for a trail, whatever you wanna call it, on, uh, Route one twenty-three. Um, when the judge finally came down with a decision, it was based on two things. It was not based on the definition of what is a sidewalk, what is not a sidewalk. We can all get hung up, hung up on that, but two things he brought to his decision, that they could not use CPC funds. One was the fact that the, uh, Highway Department, DPW, had included a, a project for that stretch of road in their budgets. So, they had, even though town meeting had not allocated the money, it was in their plans. So, um, so that was one reason. And then the other reason, now it's escaping me, was, um, oh, it wasn't, it wasn't referred to, that stretch of road was nev, never referred to in the open space and recreation plan that the town had done. And at the same time, we had an old open space and recreation plan that had not been updated, and therefore, we couldn't rely on that plan to be able to justify going forward with this. So, it just got put on hold for that reason. We recently, the town recently completed the open space and recreation project, and specifically included roads in town and areas in town where trails would be a benefit to all of, all of our citizens. And I don't think, if you look at the Driftway now, and, uh, many years ago when that was constructed, people were like, "Oh, it's, nobody's gonna use it, nobody." Every, tons of people use it. So, I think one of the reasons why Countryway, you don't see many people on it, is because it, I, does go kinda nowhere. So, to not complete this would be, it would be unfortunate, so, um, that's why it's taken so long.
Construction of it, asphalt, co, um, similar to what we have now?
Yes. My understanding, yes.
And on the, to Karen's point, I think one of the things that works so well on the Driftway, is you have that separation, like Hingham has on two twenty-eight. You, the, talk about liability, you know, I mean, that's, that's really, people walking on the sidewalk, they still could get hurt, but if you have the luxury of having that, um, layout, the town road isn't that much of a layout, then that's wonderful. But this would probably be on the road's edge, 'cause I don't think we have that on the Countryway.
I believe that's correct.
Right. To Tony's point, are there any more poles in the way? Maybe those first.
That, and I don't know.
You know, so, you know, it was, hey, it was a mistake, whatever, let's just not, continue to make the mistake, so.
Well, again, I think that would be part of the, they have to revisit the-
Engineering.
Engineering of it. I mean, this has been, uh, six years since it was first started, and three years since the last construction took place. So, I'm sure they'd have to, not only go back and revisit the pricing, which they have estimated, but they'd have to go back and revisit the engineering of that as well. And I know that has been, uh, that was an issue with the first part of the project.
Yes. Karen?
Mr. Bedrow, is this project something that the Complete Streets Program would also fall under?
Possible. I think we applied for Complete Streets previously on this, but-
Now that I know.
I think we have, have to look. Possibly, I'm not sure.
I'd just be curious, I mean, if there's a way to share costs, then that's always a plus. If we have it engineered, might it be something that would be worthwhile?
I'll talk about it.
If you ask Al Banger, he probably knows the answer to that. It might be, I'm excuse me. Uh, yeah, sidewalk, sidewalk, uh, sidewalk plan.
Is that it?
That's it.
Mm-hmm. Um, so, I think, I mean, I like the connection of the two routes, but the last one was a debacle, and if we're just gonna repeat that, then I don't think we should do this. So, I really think we need to know what the plan is before we allocate the money. And there are poles, every house going down that street, and it's, it's dangerous. You know, you got a kid riding a bike on there, and all of a sudden, there's a pole in the middle of the sidewalk, and they gotta veer into a busy street. So, I'm, I mean, I'm in favor of the connection, but I'm not in favor of it until I can see what the plan is, 'cause I really don't like what happened last time, and, and unfortunately, it was passed and done before we saw what had happened. And I think it's a lot of work to move twenty-five telephone poles, you know, three feet. So, I, I'm kind of on the fence on this one until we know what's going on with it. Um, I don't know if, if you can use, like, the admin fees to get a next step and find out what it is gonna look like, and are we gonna be crossing the street and going to the other side where it's, you know, less, um, congested? And what do the neighbors think, you know? And all of a sudden, 'cause isn't there a, isn't there something? No, there's nothing on that side now, right? Does the sidewalk just stop? So, there's nothing-
There's nothing passing on either side.
Yeah, I'd really like to see what we're gonna do before, you know, before I think it's a good plan. It's my thought, my two cents.
This, uh, this has not yet been officially, uh, approved by the committee.
So, I'd love to see-
The other two are, by the way.
Yeah, a couple of five thousand put into this to see what it's gonna look like, and then see if we're gonna spend, 'cause it's a lot of money. I mean, it's six hundred thousand dollars.
Mr. Chair, I think it's already been engineered, so I think there are actually plans in the office that could be looked at, whereas, so-
I'd like to see.
Yeah, yeah, because I, I agree with you. I mean, I must've been into DPW, I don't know, eight times when I was on CPC, looking at those plans, saying, "Those telephone poles, those tel," and I kept being told, "It's gonna be fine, it's gonna be fine, it's gonna be fine." So, I agree with you that, frankly, I wouldn't wanna spend the money on it if we can't do it the right way, um, but on the other hand, it's been put off and put off and put off, not because of the town, but because of the legal issues related to it. So, you know, if, I, I just feel as though, you know, if, if DPW can come here before town meeting with the plan, and to see how many telephone poles are there, would they have to be moved? Can they be moved? Because I guess what I was told is, you can't move them. And if you can't move them, Countryway is a countryway, so, um, and you, there are butter problems. Now, the, the person who called me told me that he had, uh, people from the neighborhood from Countryway, you know, sign a petition, but I've been burned by that as well, too. I mean, maybe you get ninety percent of people to sign it, and then ten percent don't, and then you get stuck, so, or it fails, but-
Might I suggest, um, we have a, we have a meeting, uh, March, I think it's ninth, I'm sorry, I'm not quite sure of the date, second Monday in, in March, and between now and then, sit down with DPW and see what the plan looks like. Uh, as I said, this hasn't been officially, uh, voted on or approved by the committee yet. Uh, we've had quite a few discussions on it, and, uh, it hasn't been formally approved. So, between now and the next meeting, uh, sit down with DPW. If there are concerns, we can still withdraw from the town meeting.
Great. Why don't, after you do that, why don't you come back for us, we'll have you go first and just-
Okay.
Just give us a quick five-minute-
We probably get on the agenda two, two weeks.
I think if it works, I think we all support it if it-
Yeah.
Sure.
If it looks, if it's not just taking that-
If it's not poles in the middle of the sidewalk, I understand.
Okay. Great.
Okay. So, that's the last, uh, project we have. Uh, I just wanted to point out, with the, even if those three projects do pass town meeting, that leaves the funds at one point six eight eight million dollars, and anticipating over two million for next year to come in, based on, uh, historical, uh, three percent plus the funds from the state.
The only thing I'd say, Dan, is, I think there's actually more, 'cause the two thirty that you're taking out actually goes in-
It actually goes back in, yes. So, there's actually another six hundred and ninety thousand that goes back in.
Yeah, so those-
Right.
Buckets will go up.
So, the, the point being, we're, we're in pretty good shape still, even with spending this money and spending the money we did last year. I think that the fund is in pretty good shape.
Right, so we're, we're okay to go like we go, right? But we're not okay to do another big project.
Not, not another eight million dollar project.
Right, so that's, well, that's, that's my point, is, are we, you know, we can easily come up with two million dollars for the projects every year, but is there a thought that says, "Okay, let's start accumulating so we can do another field project," or something like that, if it presents itself? I think that was kind of the board's concern at one point in time, that, you know-
Right. Well, a, a, again, um, I look at the, the committee, we don't initiate the projects, and I think there's a misunderstanding, uh, with some of the wags that are out there in town, that we initiate the projects and decide what we're gonna spend money on. We take applications and process the applications. We vet the applications very thoroughly, and either approve or disapprove what people are looking to spend money on. I haven't heard of any major projects that are in the queue. I know of a couple of projects that I don't, I wouldn't consider major, several hundred thousand dollars that people are planning on, but nothing major that's coming down the road that I know of.
Right. I disagree with you a little bit, because you do approve it.
We approve it, we don't initiate it.
No, no, but you don't have to, you don't have to approve it.
Correct, and we don't. We don't approve all the proj, we just disapprove three projects.
So, I'm just saying, if you have, if part of your mission was to accumulate for a large project, if it makes itself available, that would be, you know, that may, that's not really part of our plan right now, is, I guess is my point, 'cause we're, the balance is actually gonna go down a little bit at the end of this year, and that's, I mean, that's just what we've done, right? We get two million dollars in, and two million dollars of the projects come in. We were lucky that we accumulated over a few years to do a very big project, and that's-
And the committee has been very frugal over those past years, not, not when I was on it, but to be able to have the eight million dollars last year, even though three of it was loaned, um, still, that's a, you know, very significant spend for CPC, more than anything, I think. I've, I've seen the committee spend over the years, and there are still some, you know, big projects that- And there are still some, you know, big projects that are out there, the Lawson Tower project for $2 million is something, I personally would like to see more open housing projects come into CPC. We've really had very few over the years that I've been here, Lawson Tower, Lawson Project being the big one. But I think there's other opportunities in town for, for some of the housing projects that, that could be put forth to the committee.
And that's my point.
Right.
You're not going to be able to do a $5 million housing project, because you're not going to have it if you don't put that in your mission of, okay, you know, let's save an extra X to go towards something, some, whatever.
So, just to clarify, on, on the Lawson Housing Project number, how does that factor into the spreadsheet that, I mean, when does that hit?
That was out of that, well, first of all, that
It's already gone, okay. Yeah, sorry.
It's already allocated, it, it just hasn't been spent yet.
Yeah, so it's off the
It's been spent, too.
Well, yeah, we haven't got it, we haven't got it off the books yet.
No, it's off the books.
Okay, it is now.
It just
Okay, so it wasn't a month ago, okay.
Yeah, I was Like, two weeks ago, it went.
Okay.
It closed?
Yeah, it was all going through mass talks.
Yeah, they needed us to do that, that night to get
Yeah, well, that's when, all of a sudden
Yeah, so I'm going by the numbers from the beginning of February.
Things keep moving in
So, thank you for the work to go on, these are some great projects here. We'll, we'll hear back about the paths, and if you can go back and kind of talk about the mission stuff
Sure.
That'd be great. Okay.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
Okay, the next item for the budget is the South Shore Community Action Council. Susan Heller.
Sorry, sorry. Hello, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm Susan Heller, and I do live on Country Way, 81 Country Way, so I have just a little short story about me, I'll keep it very brief. For the past seven years, I've been a resident here in Situate. I was born and raised in Marshfield, graduated from Marshfield High. I was married and lived on the North Shore. Unfortunately, I became a widow very early in my life, and my, I had a three-year-old little boy, and we had to come back to Marshfield and live with my mother and father, and here I was, saying, what am I going to do? This is where the South Shore Community Action Council came through for me beautifully. My son was able to be in the little preschool for three, from three years old to five, before he went to kindergarten in Marshfield. And then I myself was asked to volunteer as a mom, which I did, and I went right up the ladder from volunteer to teacher assistant and lead teacher. And with the encouragement of the Community Action Council, I took courses, went to Fisher College as an adult, and got my degree in early childhood development. South Shore, it was called South Shore Head Start in Marshfield at that time, several, several years ago. But I learned a lot about special needs children, and the need in education, to be educated to help children who are of low income or situations that are kind of sad. So anyways, they encouraged me to do something with my life, but I've also, this is twofold. I was able to, when I remarried, and also lived in Marshfield then, my mother-in-law was elderly, had chemo, and when my husband and I were working, we couldn't take her for her chemo session, so that's where the South Shore Community Action Council van came through for her. And I've seen heating assistance beautifully done there, I've seen the meals and emergency help. It's a beautiful type of community situation, and though I've seen it in Marshfield, I've seen things here in Situate as well. And I just wanted to say, I'm speaking on behalf of it, that I think this is a very good project here. And this is Nikki, I just met her this evening, so, she's from South Shore Community Action Council.
Hi, Nikki.
Hi, I'm Nikki Gallis, I'm the Director of Planning and Development, South Shore Community Action Council. And Susan was kind enough to forfeit other residents of the town, a citizen's petition requesting appropriation for our agency for the work we're doing on behalf of children and parents and people who live in Situate. Each year, we end up serving between 400 and 500 residents in the town of Situate for a variety of programs, including our fuel assistance program. Through that, we make direct vendor payments to energy suppliers, so that they can have a fuel delivery to their home in winter and stay warm. We have a number of children from the town of Situate who attend our South Shore Early Education Program, which includes early Head Start for infants and toddlers, as well as Head Start and state subsidized childcare for preschoolers. Now, that helps them with bus transportation, meals, nurses, developmental screening, all kinds of supports for families, so it's a fully comprehensive model of services for families. Also have transportation, which provides door-to-door transportation for elderly, disabled town residents, so that they can get to out-of-town medical appointments that they otherwise need access to. So, that's just a handful of the kinds of services that we do provide for the town and for its residents. And so we are here asking for your support. We rely on federal, state, and local funding, as well as community support, to be able to offer these services.
Great. Thank you. Well, I mean, thank you for providing services. It's a great organization. Karen, do you want to start, or?
Yeah, I seem to recall there was a citizens petition article a few years ago, similar to this, but you only, you don't come every year, you come every so often? I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, yeah, it's a timing thing. For us, sometimes we miss deadlines.
Okay, so, it's got nothing to do with one year you really need extra money, the next year you don't? It's more about, you're busy, you're busy?
Yeah, I guess my question would be, now, this is South Shore Action also, you do the bus transportation in some way with the Council on Aging? Because we have some of that here. So this is over and above that, correct?
Yes.
So this is strictly something that isn't billed to us for transportation? This is sort of like a grant, if you will, that the town would be giving you?
If you would want to consider, yes, yes, we do have a contract with the town of Situate to provide transportation.
Right, but this doesn't, this isn't part of that?
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess my question would be for Jim, is there any place, any department in town where this could be just part of the annual budget, and they wouldn't have to do a citizens petition every year? Do we have any sort of, I don't know, like, we did have a social worker at one point. Is there somewhere this could just go, so that this isn't some, you know, making them go through this every year, or every few years?
There could be. Put a line in if you wanted to, anywhere.
All right, well, I think we should think about it.
I have a slightly different take on this. I remember two years ago when the
Auditorium.
Pardon me?
We're in the auditorium.
In the auditorium, that's right. There's the question that the services you provide are essential to the residents who use them, and to our seniors, the, you know, I forget what the numbers are, but it's just a huge amount of trips that are being used, so, for which, as my colleague points out, you know, that's a paid-for service and facilitated by your organization, and that's great. What concerned me a couple of years ago when this came in is that there are multiple very organized organizations that provide services to our residents, that are nonprofits. And I think we discussed this at the town meeting at the time, was, you know, we would love to fund everyone, you know? We have, our food pantry does wonderful work with the residents who rely on those services. We don't fund them. They, you know, they have to go through the same thing, I know you are well aware of. So my concern, from a, from a town budget perspective, is that I feel like it's a little unfair to, to, for us to try to decide which is, you know, who's providing the most services, or what is reliable, you know? So I have, I'm a little uncomfortable supporting this petition. And it is no way reflective of the work that you guys do, and the services you provide, which are top-notch and wonderful and we rely on. I just don't think it's an appropriate municipal expense. That's where I'm coming from on that.
Yeah, and I remember the meeting as well, too, and there was a lot of contention, and the project narrowly passed, if I remember correctly, I think it was $10,000 and it passed. And again, I agree with Karen, to my right, that there's, there's no doubt that the services that you provide are great, but then everyone core, I mean, we could go through, we could name off
So many.
20, 30s people that could come and, and ask for donations for these services, and, you know, frankly, I'd rather you just raise your fees, and get it from us, you know, get it from us another way than, than come and ask for it through this means, because again, I don't think it's the right channel for that. I did have a question, though, how many of the number of towns that you service, and are they all participating in giving, you know, these types of donations at town meeting?
We typically receive appropriations from about four towns. And we do specifically work with towns and citizens petitions, petitioners, for towns that are part of our designated community action area. So what that means is that the town of Situate, 11 towns on the South Shore actually have representation on our Board of Directors, and so we are designated to have that as our primary service area, and is the core of our work. So we do have a handful of programs that do have more extensive reach, so for example, our fuel assistance program reaches out onto Cape Cod and the islands. Our transportation program reaches as far west as Seco, Canmadis, almost to the Rhode Island border. Those are largely works of, of need and capacity in these regions to, for us to be able to provide in those areas. But our, our core service area, and really, our reason for being as a community action agency is to serve those 11 incorporating towns.
So of the four that have donated, did the other seven not get asked, or say no?
Not get asked, because there were other circumstances at the time, at the time that we've started asking, that indicated, that counter indicated it.
So, just to go back
Yeah, and just to speak to your concern, too, and it is, it's obviously something that we've heard elsewhere from other towns, because it is, I think, a viable concern. One example would be the town of Carver, which has appropriated to us previously, and recently, I think in the past year even, switched their method of appropriation for projects such as ours, and for work such as ours, where they now actually do an application process. That's separate from the appropriation in that committee that reviews the applications, makes recommendations, based on that review. So it's just, again, something to think about, because I do, I recall
That's an interesting idea.
Yeah, I recall you having that concern two years ago, and I do know that it's a recurring question that folks have about fairness and the equity of, of these kinds of decisions. So it might be something to consider for you going forward.
So you're suggesting maybe a town would have $10,000 worth of donations they're going to give out, and people apply for it and get it? Interesting. So, what was I going to say? So there's, in terms of the community, so four of the, four of the 11 participate. Okay, oh, I was going to say, you know, this is a petition article, it's on the warrant, it's going to go before town meeting, it's going to get the opposition that it got last time, too. I don't, I don't know where it's going to go, I mean, it's kind of, you know, if it goes there, great, it's a great organization, you know, you'll use the money well, and it'll help people. If it doesn't, I kind of don't, I don't think this is the right channel to get it, but I don't really care what the outcome is, so, so good luck. We'll opine on it, and someone will present it from our side, and go from there. But keep up the great work. We clearly use it, and there's dozens and dozens of examples, so, thank you for coming in and waiting so long.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments from the audience? I didn't know if anyone was, no?
None.
No.
Sean?
Sean, did you recue yourself?
Yes, I did.
Okay, I just need to know for a minute, I'm sorry.
But he brought candy, so he can go back.
No, he just flipped it around and shown
On the sidewalk.
Yeah, ask him.
Need some sugar?
No.
Okay. Okay, so that's all the presentations for the budget for this year, and now, the next is us voting the budget. The capital and the operating budget. Are we going to assign the articles tonight, or?
You don't have to.
Oh, dear God, no.
So
Wait, Morris is not here, we can give her all the arts.
Then she'll get the tokens.
Okay, so, why don't we go, we can just go through them quickly and see if anyone has any questions on them. Oh, wait, wait, no, there's one thing we have to do. Jim, where was the additional spending of the funds that we got from, is that part of this discussion?
Yeah, there's a, in your packet is a restoration, proposed restoration of the budgets.
Is that after?
Yeah, it's right after executive action for the capital budget.
Okay. All right, so the Is the subject order active?
I can give you a copy if you want.
No, I just asked while you're looking to ask a quick question?
Yeah.
So on the restorations, the adding the, the library, books and media budget line back in, how does that, does that compare to last year's spending, the total number?
Your request.
Yeah, we cut the request by 2,000, I cut the request by 2,000.
Oh, this is a reduction?
Put it back, yeah.
But that doesn't impact the, okay.
So, I tell you what, Jim, before we vote them, why don't you just run through this real quick? So there's $373,000 worth of excess money that we got from state funding, increased new development, and the decrease from the South Shore VOTAC. And our share of that was $373,000, and you went through and added these line items.
Right, so we, a lot of this is reductions that we put back, contractual bargaining, all our contracts are up, so we put some additional money in the contractual bargaining, because we wanted to make sure we have enough money to settle all those contracts, it was kind of tight. Board of Selectment TA litigation, we reduced that, we're putting that money back. Streetlights, we're always short in streetlights, we put 10,000 back into streetlights. 25,000 for training, this is part of Kevin Caffey, if you remember, everyone at Kevin's budgets had money for OSHA training and safety, so we're putting the money actually into my training budget, and we can do some of that out of there. And that's what we'll use some of that for, and the rest of the training that we do, that's all in my budget. Ambulance billing, because we are short, we're doing two ambulances now, economic development to bring them back to their current levels. IT capital equipment, this is for computer replacements, individual desktop replacements, I cut that out because we just didn't have it, so restoring that, we have a lot of older computers that need to be replaced. Police, we've gone to them and just reduced multiple lines to make the budget balance, we're restoring that back into their budgets. Roads and seawalls, restore those back to the level that it was, right?
Did you got some background?
Yeah, the original level, I know Tony was, was always telling me about that, so we're putting that back in there for the roads and seawalls. More money in facilities, public building, we need to put money in there, so we're putting that back up. And then the library, books and media, just to bring that back to the requested level. But the big one is the, obviously, the roads and seawalls.
So does that bring it back to the 400, the roads and seawalls?
Yes.
Because at this point, I kind of would like to see more money go into the facilities. I don't know what, what your guys' thoughts are.
That, honestly, that jumped out at me, too. It's like, we've got so many tired facilities. We also have a lot of bumpy roads.
We're doing a lot of work in facilities, and we almost always are taking money out of there, because we just don't have the capacity really to spend it all. out of there because we just don't have the capacity really to spend it all sometimes with the people we have and the staff we have. So we are putting additional money in there and going to build that over time. But we're not going to spend a lot of money in the council on aging, we're going to kind of let that, let that go. That's actually one of your articles, to sell that, get rid of it. So we are putting more money, we increased some outlines anyways this year.
And you increased his building supplies, his equipment supplies, and his repair and maintenance lines.
And this is on top of that.
And reduced the publics.
So we put a lot more money in the facilities this year.
Yeah, I just think, you know, just looking at the POs that come before us, $20,000 doesn't get you.
Get you a guardrail and glade rail.
20,000, yeah.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, the roads and seawalls budget.
So I don't know what your thought, it's hard for me to, see, I don't know the specific building or the specific project, but I, I think hiring a roofer to fix a roof somewhere is going to be a more, or is this mostly stuff? Well, if it's over 50, it's got to go to capital.
Yeah, the roof, a roof would be a capital project for the most part, unless there was a leak and we get someone to just fix the, the patch. But a roof replacement, a major roof repair is going to be capital.
So you don't think it would be prudent to say move 50,000 from there to there?
The fiscal, the fiscal 20 budget was a million 22. What was recommended to you was a million 57, and this would be increasing it to about a million 77.
But how much of it is for repair of facilities?
The repair and maintenance line is, that didn't count, was the other side of the question. It was recommended at 65,000 and this would increase it by that additional amount of...
20.
20,000 maybe.
What did we spend last year? I guess we just don't know what, what did get done because we didn't have the money.
It's also, as, as Jim said, the bandwidth to do.
Yeah. Well, I got to rely on you because I, I just don't know, but I, I just wouldn't want a project or a building to get, not get done because we didn't have funding if we actually do have a little bit more, we could throw at something for whatever happens to be a school windows repair or, or, you know, P44.
P44 has its own fund.
Yeah, from MBTA.
For MBTA, so we...
I think the big thing that we have outstanding right now is overhead doors and Kevin was looking at that for the fiscal project, what was remaining in that.
Buy apartment overhead doors.
Okay, so I'm, I'll leave it to you, but that's, that's one thing that I would...
If you switch to 50,000, I would try to make sure Kevin Kelly spent it, but, I mean, there is a bandwidth issue that we only have so many guys that can oversee so many projects at a time.
What do you guys think?
Like, I'd rely on Jim and Nancy.
That comes out.
It's easy to spend 50,000 on a small project, very easy, I think. But without seeing what has to be done or, you know, what they've already built in that, we'll find out if, if it has, maybe it's enough. But we do hear, year after year after year, maintenance, maintenance, maintenance. And we didn't do a lot last year because Kevin was that one.
We have, we do have a facility, the facilities plan.
You have the studies on going and it should be done in April.
Right, and that's, and those, that, I mean, that is incorporated into the spending lines in the operating budget.
It's going to be a lot of capital stuff, a lot of that stuff's going to be.
Yeah, well, that's what I was trying to see on the capital.
You know, roof spoilers, things like that, windows are, are capital. Fixing a window is, is repair and maintenance, but replacing windows is going to be capital. Especially these older buildings because all the caulking is going to be asbestos.
Right. But things like the Wampe Tech portico, that didn't get...
We're tearing that down. That's in the capital.
That's in the capital, right.
Yeah, in the capital.
Okay.
Well, what about, well, so you want to keep it the way it is?
I mean, I would, I recommend it there because we have the need in the roads and the seawalls also. I mean, I keep hearing we don't maintain our buildings. We're maintaining our buildings. It's just the backlog of maintenance is so big, we're trying to catch up, but newer buildings are being maintained.
Well, that's my point. If you have 50,000 and then you hire a carpenter and you say, here's 30, 30 projects, go, go to it. That's, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, as I, you know, I mean, I drive around, look at the condition of the roads, but if you put 50,000 into the facilities budget, then I would try to get Kevin Kelly to spend it. We could take the, the facility study.
Well, it could be 20, I just made us 50, I don't know what the number is.
But again, as, as Nancy said, we've increased the budget this year by...
20.
It'll just be 50,000 over last year. We increased it by 30 already, this will be another 20, it's 50,000 over last year. I mean, I know Kevin would like to hire another person, but I'm, you know, reluctant to, to put another person in there.
He has one full-time personnel, correct?
Yeah, Dave, right?
Okay, he's got one full-time carpenter, carpenter handyman, and then he's got two and a half or two and a third custodians.
Custodians, yeah.
Okay, right.
Great, I'm sorry, I just left off somebody.
Yeah, I agree with Tony, though, if we can look at, you know, some problematic areas that he can contract out on, can we do that? Like, contract out for just a spot?
Yeah.
Is it cost effective?
We contract a lot of our stuff out.
Yeah. It's just like we would if, you know, we needed the extra DPW or whatever.
My office needs to work.
Well, town hall does.
It does?
No, just my office.
More insulation. So...
Well, could I ask? So we got this extra money from the state, and this is how you're using to allocate it, by restoring some budgets that have been cut, et cetera, et cetera. So my question would be that when we get the facility study in, then I think we have, instead of saying, well, send some guy out to paint something, that we have a real understanding of what the issues are, where they are. And then I assume we can go to town meeting in the fall if we feel that there's a big need to appropriate money based on that plan, based on urgent needs that have been identified. So, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable with this allocation the way it is, just based on restoring budgets.
Yeah, I mean, I think the facility study is going to take a lot more digesting than to appropriate some money at the fall town meeting because I think...
Well, unless there's something that says, warning, warning, warning.
Yeah, if there's something that says you're going to do it now, that should already be in the capital plan that someone gave me, like the portico, they feel the portico has to come down.
But these people have been out actually, you know, looking at, to your point, sills and stuff like that. So I would feel more comfortable waiting to at least see if there's anything that emerges from that that says must, must do.
I've seen the first building, the draft from one of the first buildings, I, I thought it was pretty complete.
No shocks?
No, no. You know, you know how old the roof is, when that roof should be replaced, you know, how old, you know, some stuff you look at and go, ah, it doesn't seem like it should need to be replaced yet, but for the most part, there's, I know when I looked at it, when you looked at it, I don't think I jumped out at you and said, oh my God.
I thought it was very comprehensive. I mean, we looked at one building and they're doing 25.
Yeah.
This is going to be a nice...
Were there a lot of, were there a lot of things on that list?
Another big book.
I think it's what they looked at. They, they looked at roof, windows, building envelopes, fire sprinkler systems.
So everything's on the list.
Right.
You know, this is, this system is this old, these systems generally last this long, it should be replaced at this point. So everything in the building is on the list, and that's why you're going to be like...
Yeah, I know. I'm more concerned with, this fence is broken, these windows need to be fixed, these, you know, just the stuff.
Right, that's what this budget is, as opposed to that is going to be capital.
That's what I'm saying.
Capital planning.
If we put 25,000 in there, then we could say, go fix the fence at this and go fix the windows at Wampe Tech or whatever. But I'm not going to say it anymore. If you guys want to keep it the way it is...
I mean, what, my rationale for the 200,000 was, the first year I came in, I said, we have to reduce that. And I think the board was a little taken aback, saying, that's not something we should reduce if we don't have to. So we had the opportunity to restore it, that's why I suggested putting it back. If you wanted to put 50,000 in the facilities, as I said, I'll do my best to make sure Kevin spends it and spends it wisely in the next fiscal year that we do something else, or maybe a project that's been on hold because we wanted to, to wait.
Let me just ask one final question. If that was the case, would he have to put another person? Does, does David have, is he already overwhelmed? Could he do more? Could he do these?
People contract that way.
Yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be David doing the work, we would hire a contractor to come in. So, you know, we want to fix the HVAC at the highway bond and now we can just do it.
Okay, I'm not going to, it doesn't seem to be...
I put the 200 back for you, Tony, that was...
Thank you. I appreciate that. All right, so we'll move on because no one else is supporting me at all, not even me.
Excuse me, Tony. You guys are here for 64 Brockton Avenue?
Yes.
Oh, you poor thing.
Mr. Chair, if you would like to consider possibly...
I think they want to stay for the rest of this stuff.
Never get out.
Fascinating, isn't it?
So I, I wish I had known that, I would have called you up before. Why don't you come on up and we can talk about it.
They don't need to come up.
All right.
They're just here to listen, they're railtors of this property, passing papers.
Okay.
So for your consideration.
So let's move forward to that real quick, so they don't have to stay. Someone want to start the conversation on that?
Well, I mean, if I understand it correctly, there's a lot of documentation here that this was, there was restrictive covenant put on the property in question when there was a sewer moratorium, and then the sewer moratorium went away, but the covenant was never, really, never released or removed. And that this will formalize that oversight was my understanding.
Jim, is that what you understand? I, I thought this was just a formality.
I mean, Will's recommending that it be released. Yeah, so I, I agree, I think it's a formality. That was what happened during the moratorium, they were restricted as to, it was a two-bedroom house, it couldn't be more than a two-bedroom house. That restriction is no longer in place on our sewer hookups. So to keep the restriction on this house is basically penalizing this one house in town.
Okay. Is it a motion or is it just?
There is.
Move that the declaration of restricted covenant, recorded in the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds document number 737451 on certificate of title number 122508, is no longer necessary and therefore, as the sewer commissioners, the dwelling at 64 Brockton Avenue is no longer limited to use or occupancy as a two-bedroom house and can be used or occupied as more than a two-bedroom house.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris, further discussion? Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous.
You guys want to stay for the rest, right?
I have a great appreciation though.
It is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lorraine, thanks for pointing that out.
Thanks, Lorraine.
Okay, so why don't we just go to the capital and the operational budget now that you've vetted those changes?
We're on TV still.
Now, there's no document in your packet because you found the capital and operating budget books in front of you.
All the articles, twice, one with explanation and one with...
Well, we have to vote on the operating capital first, don't we?
Right.
And then those more articles, you have a list, so it'll be a little easier for you.
So I was going to go to number, article number...
Well, I have a motion.
Okay.
Move to approve the town of Situate FY '21 capital budget.
How's that?
That sums it up. So did anyone have any, so if you go to page 88, it lists the, is there a total of the numbers? Oh my God. We're going all the way to MM?
Yes.
What's the total amount of it?
21 million.
21 million dollar capital.
Of which, just over 9 million is funded by FEMA.
So if you just want to scroll through the items and make sure there weren't any that you had an issue with, there's 12 million dollars of, actually 13 million dollars in the FEMA stuff like Nancy just said.
So may I, Ms. Karen?
Yes.
As you're scrolling. One of the advisory committee members asked me for some more information today about this. It's got free cash funding of 1.4 million, retained earnings funding of just over a million, revolving fund, funding of 291,000, borrowing supported by the tax levy of 4.395, borrowing supported by enterprise fund receipts of 4.167, FEMA reimbursements of 9.7 million, unspent articles of 38,000, capital stabilization funds plural of 360,000, tax relief of 100,000, mail tax of 84,000. That's what gets you to 21, plus 26 and whatever the amendment is.
What is the, like, the third one you said, tax lev, the...
Revolving fund, BTRV.
Oh, okay. So there's the revolving fund.
Which is the very first one on the list.
Here it is. So you just went right across the...
And I think the one in your book is not with the changes that capital planning recommended to you, which was to fund the chipper and take out a truck, and to change the widow's walk, project amount from 1.45 to 1.8.
And the mine and beach parking lot.
And mine and beach parking lot from its estimate to 290,000.
The chipper is in here.
It is in the, what, what community capital planning committee recommended to you.
Right.
Right, and this is 1.4...
And it's here, right? Well, I guess I'm looking on this.
I'm looking at this.
I'm looking on this.
The one that's in your book is, Jim's plan to them, the plan they gave to you, different three items.
Right. So there's 1.4 in free cash and the borrowing is from a general fund.
17.
14 million.
14 million of which 9.75 million is FEMA.
Right, 12 of that is just the foreshore.
Right.
13 of it is foreshore, sorry.
So is that, so typically we spend about 1, 2, 4, 1 and 1/2 million a year from the general fund.
In dead service, yes.
Right.
Around 1.5 to 1.7.
So what is that number this year?
We're at 1.6 this year.
And that is this 14 million minus...
Minus, minus the foreshore.
The part we're getting from FEMA?
Right, because this is going to go over several years. We won't be spending that 12 million for a couple of years, we just have to permit that project.
Okay. But anyone have any issues on any of the items?
No.
Okay, it's a big plan.
It's a big plan.
I think probably the specific motion would be to approve the capital plan as recommended by the capital budget committee because they have the changes in there. And I agree with those changes.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve the 2021 capital budget as proposed by the capital budget committee with...
Just propose the capital budget, that's fine.
Thank you.
Second.
Second by Ms. Canfield, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous. Now we have the operating budget. So Nancy and Jim, this all ties within the financial forecast?
Yes, that bottom line number that's on that, the town restoration.
Includes a 3 point, $373,000 worth of additions. Anyone have any comments on that or can I have a motion to approve the budget?
Move to approve the town of Situate fiscal 21 operating budget. Second.
Second by Ms. Conley, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Hey, good job, you guys. That was a, it's a mountain of work, but you guys each year do a great job. Okay, so now we will, all town meeting warrant articles. So we're gonna, I think, should more, what's the thought under this one, Lorraine? Are we supposed to vote?
Well, if you could do whatever, however you choose, some years you vote them all except a few after you discuss them. Some years, you vote them all except a few after you discuss them. There's a list of them. You've already seen a couple of drafts of this. So, this isn't the first time you've seen this. But there's a list that Nancy and I put together of all the articles. In your hand, though. Sometimes it's easier in your hand.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Than to go through the whole warrant. But certainly, you can infer it after you've discussed it.
So, there's some of these I'd like to wait for more, but some of them we can just go through, I imagine.
Yeah.
So, why don't I start going through them and you... Someone say if there's a hole or something on...
Okay.
Doesn't this need to be signed tonight? May I have the... Do the sign for the advisory booklet?
We were held up because planning board hasn't held their hearing for the zoning articles. It's not on Thursday. So, as much of it as you're ready to... We want them to approve the warrant because they don't have to take their vote tonight.
Right. Say it again.
Then, contingent on anything the planning board comes forward with on their hearing on Thursday, we can amend it. Same as we'd only do with town council or town administrator changes that have we made.
So, in the motion, you wanted to say...
To approve the warrant as presented with any changes provided by town council, town administrator, or planning board.
That is not taking positions on the articles. It's just approving them to be on the warrant.
So, they can work on the advisory booklet.
Because they're having their hearing on Thursday for the sign by law as well as the...
I don't think some changes on that today.
Okay, so is that... Anything that we want to remove from here that are our articles?
They're ours? Oh, okay.
Right, because we can't remove the petition ones and we can't remove the zoning or...
Is... On the petition, Linda Ferguson didn't withdraw it or you can't?
Can't.
You can't, okay.
Can we talk about the cell tower leases?
Twenty-five year... No, wait, how long is the question?
At least the authorization to lease those towers is expired.
Right.
It was a 25-year lease. We are getting calls from lessees asking to extend their lease.
For that monstrosity right there?
For that one mostly in Brazil.
Transfer.
Transfer station. But we can't do it. We don't have the authority to extend it beyond the 25 yet that the town's already approved. So...
So, I'd like to move that.
Me too.
Where would you move it to?
Someplace that we get hot cell service in the harbor?
Well, no, you wouldn't move it too far. It would change everything.
Right. You've got the police...
I mean, it's just right in a location that you could use for the whole campus here.
Yeah, I mean, that's our tower, too. We have our microwave and stuff on there, so...
To Tony's point, do we own land nearby, maybe right across... Without... I don't know. I don't know about what... If you move that, it's like...
Screw it up.
But you know what I'm trying to say? If we could move it a little bit, to Tony's point, that's right smack in the middle of this lot. Especially after taking the lease.
Do we have to do like 25-year leases?
You want to. You want to lock them in.
But I feel like we're in the... Never mind.
I'm pretty sure we had a quote in the past and it was $500,000.
To move it? It'd be really expensive to move it.
It was going to be at our expense. Now, with the leases expiring...
How much money do we get a year?
Just over $200,000 in rental income.
And that goes to the general fund?
Yep.
I think that this is a very small window that we have to figure out what we... If we can do anything with that.
Well, that's a little old. I remember them talking about it. It's a lattice tower. I think there are more carriers on this one than a monopole, the one that's on the transfer station. Maybe I'm wrong. And then, back when we did this one, you know, the prices were higher.
I would like to get the authorization to extend the lease and lock these carriers in. There's a lot of consolidation going on. As part of that consolidation, they don't need as many towers. So, I'm concerned if we start saying, "Well, we might move the tower. We might do this." They're just going to go someplace else and we lose that revenue.
What if we did the lease but had them build a new tower?
If they had to build a new tower, they wouldn't give us any revenue for it. They would just build a new tower. Wouldn't get any...
Well, it would work whatever it costs to build the tower. I mean, like you said, the towers aren't necessarily...
As intrusive as that one. But, okay, let's go down that path for a second. Tony Vignani owns a lot that's within the layout or doesn't even own a lot within the layout, but it does the need for it. Guess what? If we tell Jim to stall, Tony's now got all the carriers across the street, you know?
Yeah, I can tell that happened another time I was in. We had an hour and a half ready to go.
And all the stuff, remember? We weren't going to put it near the school.
Well, Tilden Marlowe.
That's right.
Did they ever build that?
That's there. No one even knows it. I don't know if it's working. It's a monopole and it's there.
Yeah, I don't know if it even has carriers on it, but the pole's there.
I don't know.
But we're... I am concerned that if we don't act on this, that they're just going to say, "Okay, we got another tower. Sprint has a tower here. AT&amp;T has a tower here. Sprint, AT&amp;T, whatever. We're just going to go with that tower and you're off the door."
No, I understand. But you understand also that this is our one opportunity in 25 years to do something with that place that that's not where we want it to be.
I guess my response would be the only thing... The only time we're going to do something with that is if we're doing something...
With this.
With this. So, if we decided, the town decided, we were going to move the town hall up into the old gates and this was going to come down, we could have a conversation about moving that. But short of that, I don't see where we would have a project that that would have to move. Aside from the fact that people just might not like it there. It might... It's getting late. I'm starting to trip over my own tongue.
Yeah, well, I mean, the fact is, we've never discussed it. You know, this is the first time we've ever talked about it. In fact, the first time I saw it was, which is probably my own fault, was last night, two minutes ago.
You mean Friday when you got it?
Yeah. Whatever it was. How do you guys feel? I think...
Well, I have questions. I definitely have questions. Not so much about... I'm not as concerned about this.
But if you... If we extend the leases and we decide to build a new tower, you could always have a discussion with the carrier. Do you want to move to the new tower?
But they have a lease for that tower.
That's okay. Just move the lease to the new tower.
Something tells me it's not that easy. Something tells me that we have an oppor... We have a one and 25-year opportunity right now to talk about and figure it out.
But I think to Jim's point, that conversation should have happened a year ago.
Should have happened two, three years ago. I mean, the...
Are you looking for another 25-year lease? Or is it just five or 10?
Well, we would like up to 25 years. And then the carriers are going to tell us whether they want to do 25 years or not. I can't remember whether we were talking 25-year leases or...
There are a little of the place. Some of them want to buy us out, somewhat 99-year leases. They're... And they're very busy all the time.
Does it make... I don't know. Does it make sense that... I'm sure you can put a pole in cheaper than putting that in. I'm sure it'll be aesthetically nicer than that nowadays.
A lot of technology... What little bit I know, a monopole did not carry as many carriers as a lattice.
But maybe it's 25 years ago.
You need a minimum height for a monopole. And then each carrier is 10 feet on top of each other to get the required height. So, whatever the required height is here for the bottom one, let's just say it's 100 feet. Your first carrier's 110. Your second carrier's 120.
How many carriers are on that?
Two, three.
Oh, one that... Because there's subtenants?
Oh, yeah, the subtenants. That's right. Plus, we have our stuff on there, which I don't know if a microwave antenna system is... Just my ignorance is conducive to a monopole. You've seen the trees. I don't know if you've seen the trees.
Mm-hmm.
Which... But they interfere with the signal. The signal's not as strong when you have the trees. Then you end up having more towers, so... You know, my concern was and is the $200,000 in revenues that the town's getting annually that if we don't do something, that they will just find someplace else to go. And right now, we have to tell them, "We don't have the authority to enter into a longer lease agreement."
The article only provide... I'm sorry, Karen.
No, sorry.
The article only provides the authority for the board to do something.
Doesn't make us.
It doesn't mandate the board do anything. So, the board can still have discussions and decide where it wants to go. But barring having the article to authorize the board...
We can't even have the discussions.
So, it would authorize us to do it.
Yeah.
And when does the authorization run out?
Uh, I think it's got two more years, maybe three. But they want to act now. They don't want to wait. Because if they wait and we say, "We're not renewing your lease," they're stuck. So, they'll have to look for another place to do it.
I don't have a problem with the article to allow us to do it, but I think we need to start talking about other options for it. You know, if the board wants to consider that.
Yeah, I don't know where to put it.
Come on, right there.
Right where?
Right there.
There it is.
It's over there. What we should talk about. All right, but I don't have a problem with that article now.
No.
Can I ask a question? The sale of the council on aging and mine to fire, this is just to get an appraisal, probably?
This would authorize you to sell it. Again, it's an authorization. You don't have to.
But we... Yeah, all right, okay. So, just can you just take us down that path for a minute? One minute?
So, they're both authorized residential?
Yep.
Okay, so it would have to be residential use. I haven't looked at the underlying zoning. I know the council on aging, there's some floodplain issues, not for the building, but for the parking lot.
Even the mine at station might care.
It's in conservation.
Possible.
It's in the wetlands.
It's possible there's some floodplain issues.
Yeah, right.
Those all are disclosed. You have to set a price based upon either an appraisal or the assessed value. I actually looked up the mine. It's over $700,000 on our assessed sheet. I got a copy of here. That's what I said. Are you kidding me?
Maybe that failed a trade.
The board can then decide they want to restrict it to a specific use. So, when I was in Norwell, the town sold a piece of property that had to go to a nonprofit that met certain requirements. So, basically Habitat for Humanity bought the property and did Habitat for Humanity.
The food pantry.
You can't limit it to the food pantry. But you can limit it to a nonprofit. There'd have to be more than one that would meet that requirement. You could limit it to a single-family house. You could say, "We want to use it for low-income housing for whatever." And then you go out and you put it out on the street and people make you offers and you pick the highest, best use.
Whether you seal bid or...
You do seal bid or auction.
Right.
Yep.
And that could happen. If this happens, the ATM, this could happen with any... Well, so much council on aging, so they move, but the mine and fire station could happen with any...
If the board just wanted to dispose of it...
Right.
It'd be fairly quick. You just do an hour and a half, turn it around, put it out, and off you go. If you wanted to have some sort of limitation or find a specific type of use for it, then that would take however long the board wanted to have that discussion and come up with what you wanted to do with it.
And both of these properties have been before town meeting before for sale. The mine and fire station was before town meeting in 1999 and it was indefinitely postponed. And then the following year, it came back for, I think, renovations. And then the council on aging was before town meeting to be sold in 2005. And it was approved to be sold with the proceeds to go to benefit a new senior center at a library location. But since that ever happened, it was a move. So, it's...
Something was going to go with the fire station. It failed because of the future use of that land. I can't remember what the fire station...
The following year, they came back with some type of a renovation plan. So, it was before it was closed, I think.
Yeah, and I didn't look to see whether they're conforming or non-conforming. I didn't get that far into it. Would have to look at that, obviously. You know, the building using the fire station, that could be restricted to the footprint it's in depending upon the zoning. So, whoever buys it has to stay within that footprint. I didn't get that far because like the board said, they didn't want to sell it. I wasn't going to bother doing the work and it means. But it has to meet current zoning. We are exempt from use as a municipality. So, that just means we can put out buildings in a residential zone or a commercial zone. We can do it in any place we want. But when you sell it, whoever you sell it to will have to meet zoning. Yeah. So, it'll be residential.
So, can I just... Your opinion? Could you build a single-family home there without...
Neil looked at it because we've talked about it years ago when we were looking at the multiple buildings just before we voted all those. And it was questionable. It was something that we'd have to go back before a hearing to decide what you could do there.
I think you could take the existing building and renovate it into a single-family home.
If he allows it. If he doesn't think it's... Well, no. If it requires more than 50%, Bob would...
Well, then you'd have to meet...
It would have to be torn down.
Or raised.
Yeah, raised as a...
Well, raised up. You'd have to meet the floodplain.
That, too, possibly. But the whole 50% thing kicks in, doesn't it? Well, I don't want to...
If you go over 50% of the value, you have to meet...
Oh, right.
The current floodplain elevations. If it doesn't meet it there.
You just have to start over. I don't think you can... You have to start over. I don't think you could rebuild if it's more than 50%. But that's a discussion now.
You can raise the house. So if I'm, if I buy a piece of crap house and I'm going to completely redo, and it's more than fifty percent of the value, then as part of that renovation, I would have to put the house up to whatever the correct height is.
I rant about things too, so...
But if it's assessed at seven hundred thousand, is that what I heard?
Yeah.
Someone must think you can do something with it.
Not necessarily.
Well, why would you assess it at seven hundred thousand?
We don't tax it, so...
I understand that, but it's still, if somebody decided it was worth that...
It was probably assessed quite a while ago and hasn't been looked at in a while.
Must have been thirty years.
Because we don't tax ourselves on it.
I understand, but if it's still, if it's still got an assessment associated with it, it's, in someone's opinion...
If you look at any land, at any prop, any...
I guess Karen, the answer is that the town is not questioning the assessment because I'm not paying a tax on it. Because if I was paying the taxes on it, I'd be like, there's no way this is worth what it's worth. And I would go in for abatement. But whereas it's just our building, that's just what the value is.
Does anyone have any articles? I think the two that I want to have more discussions on, or the two that we just discussed, but I think this just allows us to proceed, so it doesn't have to...
Tom Eady cannot force you to do anything. So they can't make you buy or sell. They can only authorize you to do it.
So it's the same thing on the sped reserve fund. It's simply authorizing us to set one up, but we, because we, I know Mara was concerned about how we would fund it, but if this is simply allowing us the mechanism to set it up...
We're not putting any money into it. We're not doing it. We're just making the fund.
Until we choose.
So every year, someone would have to, it would have to pass to get money.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
You have to vote to put money into it.
Okay, so do we need a motion to accept the annual and special town meeting? Second by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Motion will change a little bit though.
Oh, yeah. What?
Because of what Nancy said.
Nancy, what'd you say again about the planning?
Similar to your normal motion that subject to any changes provided by town council from the town administrator or from the planning board from the public hearing.
So moved.
Second by...
Second.
Ms. Conley. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous for you.
And we're, just to clarify, I'm sorry. Just to clarify, you are not voting for a warrant. You are voting the articles to put on the law.
Correct, correct.
Wait.
What? So moved.
So moved.
Second by Mr. Harris.
So we will be voting a warrant for Nancy.
Vote to approve the April thirteenth, twenty twenty, special town meeting and annual town meeting warrant articles...
To add to the warrant.
To add to the warrant, subject to review by town council, town administrator, and the planning board.
Thank you.
And Nancy, halt. Always.
Second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Conley. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Okay, the next one is, we need a selectman to represent this Cituit Public Schools superintendent search. I unfortunately cannot do it because I'm not around those days. Does anybody want to do it?
What days are they? I didn't know that was on there.
They weren't on there. I...
You know?
I love those days. I did know that. More importantly, I wiped through that.
You don't have to name a board member. I received an email from Bonnie over the schools asking me to name somebody. I responded, do you want an employee or do you want a member of the board of selectmen? She said, board of selectmen, or if they don't want to do it, to have me name somebody. So you get it first, to name somebody if someone wants to sit on that. If not, then I will pick someone here at the town hall to represent the town side of the government, but...
Didn't Mara sit on the last one? Who was on the last one?
You were going to sit as well as one of us typically, wouldn't you?
I am not included on this, no.
The last time I know, Tricia and John Danny sat on it.
Yeah, just they've only asked for one.
Can we say we'd like the town administrator as well as one of us?
They determine the makeup of the committee.
Karen, did you nominate Sean?
I mean, I don't, nobody else, I'm sorry.
I would like to ask Mara because she's one of the liaisons too.
Well...
Yeah, I need to have it done by Thursday.
Please nominate. Was she, is she reachable? We don't have to officially vote it, do we? Can't we just name?
You should. You could, you could vote to, well, you could vote to make Mara the designee, and if she's unavailable, then...
Sean will be...
It's usually during the day. It's hard to...
It's hard right now.
I can do it.
So why don't we, why don't we nominate Karen, and if Mara wants to do it, then you guys will do it.
Fine. That's fine.
So can I have a motion?
Move to appoint Karen Conley to the superintendent, superintendent search committee with Mara as an alternate?
Good.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? See none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I guess I can vote for myself.
I'll just ask Mara tomorrow, and then I'll let the schools know.
Yeah.
Okay, the next one is the senior tax work-off abatement program. So they changed the levels of pay up to twelve hundred dollars and thirty people. They put some guidelines around.
This was released last year.
Just minimum wage.
Changed again. So there would be below the wage right now.
Like the substitute teachers in our schools?
Ooh, nice.
Off topic.
Beyond my control.
I know.
Do you have a motion?
I, I'm fine with it. Anyone have any discussion on it?
No.
All right, can I have a motion?
Move to increase the annual limit for the senior tax work-off abatement program to twelve hundred seventy-five dollars, increase the hourly rate to twelve dollars and seventy-five cents effective January one, twenty twenty, and set the number of participants to a maximum of thirty.
Second. Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? See none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Okay, now we have a discussion, yeah, discussion about for a one-day liquor license for Ellen McKenzie at the Lucky Finn on February twenty-ninth from six PM till ten PM for a private event.
So moved.
Second by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. We already voted on the release of that covenant, and now we have a betterment deferral. Please don't mention any names. Can I have a motion to abate this residence sewer bill?
Move to grant sewer betterment deferral for the current year taxes in the amount of one thousand four hundred and seventy-three dollars and eleven cents for parcel ID fourteen one forty-nine oh.
Second by...
Second.
Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. The next item is our liaison reports. Anybody have any?
Well, can I stop? Something exciting. Jim, fill me in. Correct me. At the last Waterways meeting, we had some photographs of this really wonderful boat that the town voted to have built. It's out of the mold. It's thirty-four foot calibre. It's going to be the fire rescue hollow masters boat with a pump and everything. So I think it's going to be delivered in June.
It's due this summer, yep.
You might forget, but it was almost half a million dollar boat, so it's going to be something that's going to really protect the people out in the ocean for twelve months a year. Really looking forward to that.
And we'll be replacing a boat. We're not adding a boat. We'll be replacing a boat.
Right, right. This, this...
We're not adding to the Navy. We're going to get a new boat, a little boat.
Thank you.
Karen?
No, I'm good.
Karen?
Quickly, just to remind everyone, the next community master plan meeting is March twenty-fifth. We're getting to the short strokes of finishing the master plan public outreach, and they'll start writing soon with, I believe, the final draft should be, I think it's September. So they're on target. The schedule's on target and it's going well. And I just wanted to mention that one of the, we mentioned the EDC has been very active. There has been preliminary conversation with regional EDCs, so Cohasset, Hall, and Hangum, to get together and have a conversation about things like the Irish Heritage Trail and maybe connectivity with last mile transportation, things like that. So EDC Hall is going to invite other committee members from the region to get together, have that conversation.
Soon.
So that's kind of cool.
Two quick updates. First charter review meeting, and kind of set the guidelines and what we wanted to, what was important to all the members there. And we're going to have another meeting coming up in the next week or so and start taking chunks and reading that. So it was a good meeting. Myself and Mara was there with the rest of the committee. Rec commission had a meeting. They're going to be coming before shortly with the, you proposed fees rates and how it incorporates the new fields over there, so that'll be interesting. They've worked a ton on it, so that'll be before us as well. That's all I have. Correspondences, we've got a resilient, sustainable community forum for resilience, sustainability, and investment in Cituit Harbor on March third from seven to eight thirty. And we have a nice letter from...
Lover's letter.
Sixth grader Juliette Stewart wrote the board of select, I think, to me, the board of select, to, no, it was to dear select people. And she wrote us this great letter stating her opinion on the naming of the selectmen to be a select board, which is a very topical conversation we're having right now, pointing out some of the reasons why, why there's three women on the board right now. And I just wanted to thank her for her opinion and thank her for writing at us, and I know it meant a lot to me and I think the other people here, and I think the town may be voting on this in the near future. So thank you, Juliette, for sending it to us. You did a great job. Any other correspondence?
Valentine's card correspondence.
And a couple other things.
So we received a lovely note from our former town archivist, Betty Foster, letting, thanking everyone for her recognition on her retirement. Jim mentioned the Veterans Council breakfast meeting is tomorrow at nine AM, which is important. And then this, oh, this is a great event. Cituit Accessibility Awareness Event has been scheduled, I think it's the third year maybe, March twenty-eighth at the St. Mary's Parish Center beginning at ten thirty, and it has probably, I don't know, it looks like twenty different organizations will have tables set up to help people with everything ranging from if you want to know about course or if you want to know about the library. So that's a really cool thing. And then we have these.
Yes, what do you got?
So every year, our elementary students send thank you notes to municipal workers, and there's just a couple that have been curated by Lorraine that I just wanted to...
Valentine's cards.
Valentine's card. And this was a shout out to the engineer division. Happy Valentine's Day. Thank you for making our town such a great place to live. Also, thank you for approving the design of our building and playgrounds. We appreciate everything you do. You are an important part of our community. From a Jesse Villa from Wapatac. And then we all got similar cards. I don't think Sean got any, but the rest of us did. Oh, there it is.
What'd they say, Sean?
Yeah, what's yours say?
Well, I didn't want to, you know, I figured I'd go last. I could say the best for last, all right? First of all, she gets an A in penmanship. Unbelievable, all right? Dear Sean Harrison, she spelled it correctly. Thank you for putting so much hard work into all the meetings and rules to make Cituit a safe and happy place to live. I hope you enjoy your Valentine's Day, and I most certainly did, and it was signed by Lyra Mara from fourth grade at what school?
Wapatac.
Wapatac, okay. Well, thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Karen?
Well, I already took mine home, so I have two for Mr. Boudreau. Dear James Boudreau, thank you for all the work you've done for our town. You have made it a better place to live. Happy Valentine's Day. And it says here, you have been hit by Cupid. So I'll make sure you get this.
I'll tell my wife.
And this was another one. Dear James Boudreau, thank you for making our town a happy place. I love living here, and it's a good, here's a good something, and a lot of nice beaches. Oh, I think she thinks we have a pool, as well, as nice people. Happy Valentine's Day. Sincerely, Effie Quinn. So I'll give these back to you to take home, Jim.
Two, Jim, wow.
Yes.
I got one, and mine is so special because Matthew says my last dream writer, which is a rarity. He said, thank you for making the town the best as you can, especially thank you for not flip-flopping as much as your male counterparts.
What?
Thank you, Matthew. Fourth grade, great artwork as well.
And one of the nice things I did to show too was to send it to some of the board committee members, like Dan Family at CPC and...
So nice. It seems like it's a Wapatac tradition to do this. Yeah, it's really nice.
Okay, so now I think I need a motion to adjourn and sign documents.
Wait, six minutes. Move to accept the meeting minutes for the board of select meeting held on February fourth, twenty twenty. Second.
Second by Ms. Conley. Further discussion? See none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. And now I'll accept a motion to adjourn and sign documents.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
Fabulous.
Thank you, everybody.